All right, we will call to order our regular council meeting for February the 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. It is 6:30. So with that, I have asked Councilmember Owens to lead us in invocation, followed by Mayor Protim Hernandez in the pledges to both the United States and Texas flag. So all rise.
And bow your heads with me, you know, in prayer. Thank you, dear heavenly Father, for this day that you've given us, the prayers that you answer for some people and the blessings that have been received, Lord. Pray that you be with us tonight as we has this council meeting tonight to make decisions which are in the best interest of all the people in Pearland. Lord, as we go through here, we know that many people are suffering out there at this day and time from the virus and some have actually gone and not being with us anymore. Pray for those that have it, that they do return, Lord, to be able to get through this. And those that didn't and lost family members, we pray for them, Lord, at the same time. Lord, we pray for our first responders and our people that's out there each and every day in the communities. Lord, we pray for our military that's here in the stateside and in other nations as well, Lord, to be with them, to watch over and protect them and bring them back safely, Lord. We pray all these things in your blessing, your name. Amen.
Please join me first in the pledge to the United States flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And now to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you both for opening us up. With that, I guess roll call and certification of quorum. I know we've got everyone present. We have Mr. Kamkar online, but all the other council members are present and accounted for. So we do have a quorum. With that, we'll turn over to citizen comments. Mayor Protim, would you introduce? I think we have one or so online and then maybe one in the audience here.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We do have one speaker online, Mr. Jeffrey Hunkley. Josh, can you get him queued up? And you will have three minutes to speak. And we'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please state your name and address prior to delivery of your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. My name is Jeff Hunkley. I reside at 3912 Oakwood Drive, North Pearland, Texas, 77581. I was originally going to speak on behalf of an elderly woman who had water bill issues. And was basically what happened to her is she had detected a leak in her system. It was determined that the leak was on her side. She had it fixed. But one of the issues is she fell under the problem of us billing in the rears. So even after she fixed the leak, she was continuing receiving high bills. Now, when I was given information here recently that said that the city was working with her and giving her a credit, however, I reached out to her since then, and she has not received a bill credit. So I will try to reach out to her to get her to work with city. But I certainly do appreciate the city working with her and trying to resolve her issue. And then I have since monitored this water issue since last year when it first brought to council. And during the last meeting, there was a phrase, conspiracy theory thrown out there. And I want to let you know how the public arrives at some of these assumptions that are being discussed in social media. If data is communicated to us incorrectly, we use that data as factual, that will lead to false statements. In fact, I see over a year, we're still dealing with this issue and no one really has just stepped forward and took responsibility. And it seems like we need to perform some sort of root cause analysis to ask five whys. When Council Perez said there was a rogue employee that was terminated, and Councilman Carbon had to say, wait, do we know that? This leads me to question, why was that statement even made? Either Councilman Perez was told that as a fact, or was thrown out there just to mislead the citizens to say one person made it there. And we solve the problem so everyone can stop looking further into this issue. We found out later that that rogue employee came up, and she said that that was a false statement that she had presented. Now, if Councilman Perez was told that, why was he told that? And why wasn't all of council on the same page? Who told him that this was a fact? Then, when the Raftelus report was discussed in the last meeting, it was highlighted that this was a cultural issue, because there was not more pushback from the employees on the directive given by their superiors. So how many of you are willing to disobey a direct order from your boss and risk termination? So here, to me, is another, yet another deflection of responsibility. But now it's staff's fault for not telling senior management, changing the reading delay. It was a bad idea. So with tonight's agenda, I'm very happy to finally hear that after me asking council multiple times to establish goals for the city manager, it's finally on the agenda. Certainly. And even though these discussions will occur in executive session, I hope the citizens will get to hear them and give input prior to them being adopted. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hunkley. Next, Mayor, we have Mr. Jimmy Davis. Mr. Davis, if you would please limit your comments to three minutes. Prior to delivery of your statement, please state your name and address for the record.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsnoe Street, Pearland, Texas, 77584. Gentlemen, I'd like to start off first thanking the mayor. You're working tirelessly to get more vaccines into the city to take care of the residents. And while I'm not needing one, I appreciate all the work you're doing. And all those that have written letters, Councilman Kamkar in Orlando, I think I saw a letter that y'all penned as well, calling for more. Thank you for working hard for the residents. On the third 230 page, there is a link to the municipal code website regarding when payments are due. As a resident, this leads me to believe the website is up to date and maintained. I was surprised to find out that it is not, though, and asks the city to develop a policy where the site is updated as changes to ordinances are made. I believe all residents should have a right to have access to all current ordinances. Chapter 30, section 30-38 is one such example that can be referred to. Chapter 30, section 30-46 is another. It indicates a residence to be charged $50 for having a meter tested, but they're being charged much more than that, and most are not being afforded the opportunity to view the meter test as required by the ordinance. Raftelus shared in their report that there are municipalities that have permanent committees that are involved with utility service. Some residents, myself included, have advocated for such a thing here. The ad hoc committee that council established isn't a great first step, and I thank y'all very much for that, and it's very needed. But it's short term. We need something longer term. Residents complain about the smell of water, about why we pump half a million gallons into a backup storage tank only to dump it into the creek, into the ditches later that month. We need something long term, and I encourage council to consider adopting a scope for such a committee. Open it up to citizen comments so you can actually hear what the people would like to see, and develop language that can be placed on the next ballot so the residents can vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And Mayor, if I could just clarify for the public viewing this evening, that just so they understand how this works, that we don't respond directly to the residents who come to speak, but that we do follow up, staff follows up, and council can follow up directly afterwards.
That's correct. And thank you to both citizens on speaking tonight. Thank you for your comments and keeping it within the time. I will state this. We had a great first step with vaccine rollout last week, 2,000 doses delivered, and our staff did a tremendous job organizing that. Lots of great positive feedback. More to come. We're working every day to lobby to get more in here. So just stay tuned. And those that are online watching, stay tuned to our different channels. As we hear more, we will certainly get it out there. So with that, we're moving on to consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? And before anybody says anything, I did receive B is in Bravo, C is in Charlie, E is in Echo. Are there any additional items to be removed? Okay, seeing and hearing none, moving in that direction. Councilmember Orlando, would you present the consent agenda with the exceptions of B, C, and E?
Absolutely, Mayor. Consideration possible action on the consent agenda, items A through L, with the exception of B, C, and E. So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution, consent agenda items A through L, except items B, C, and E.
All right. Thank you very much. And Councilmember Carbon, would you present item B as in Bravo for consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2021-30. So moved.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good evening. If you would allow, I'd like to talk to B and C as one. They go hat in hand. So my comments will introduce both of those. I know those two separate actions. So B and C, just for background, is as budgeted in this fiscal year, finally making progress on an asset management system. This is integral to our ability to manage a city as many, many assets and variety of them, streets and sidewalks, roads, utilities, underground facilities. We account for those, obviously, in the audits in terms of their value. But this will be, take that to a whole nother level. This is very standard systems that cities of our complexity and size and maturity would have in place. So this really moves us up in that process. The system itself will be used not only for tracking of those assets, but one of the things we're really looking forward to and really need is the integration with our GIS software. All these things are geospatial, so they'll be tied to locations. And so that'll make, a couple of the other things I want to mention. It also has ability to be integrated with our work order system. Right now, that's a beyond obsolete HD system. It requires a lot of paper, which obviously lends itself to errors and slows the process down. And so this will all be integrated. And the system also, one other feature, it'll work with our Connect to Pearland. That's a front end where anybody can register an observation. There's, that adds the eyes and ears, if you will, for condition statements. And so that system right now is siloed, but this will be integrated with that. That's one of the things we really like about it. And so that system will flow directly into the relevant departments instead of just sending an email. I'll create work orders and allow for better tracking. There's a lot of background information in the report. And the staff team was very diligent and spent a lot of time with this. It is an important step forward for us to follow through on this budget item. And so we had staff from IT, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Fleet, a lot of different people that are going to be touching this. And so this will be something that we can build upon and will be with us for a long time and move that up. So the item C is the actual software. As it states in the memo, the initial year as it gets started up is 50,000. But the full year, just like when you buy your Microsoft packages or any other software these days, it's a licensing agreement that gets you the ongoing service for that, the upgrades and the security, which is critical for that. And so event, as it outlines in memo, it steps up until the full year, I believe is 120,000, that software package in year three, but steps up to that. And New Edge, after a lot of consideration, will be doing the integration. We found, obviously, this is important to have that setup and all the APIs and the pieces that fit together done correctly at the front end. So they'll be with us at that for the startup of this and that process to roll that out. And so we've got a good system overall with the city for, you know, in terms of our fiber network and communications. We'll be moving into more and more into an advanced SCADA system, which is important. So all these things work together. And this is an important piece towards that. So the actual software is CityWorks, as you see in item C. And again, that's, I don't want to say the industry standard, but it's very well known and a lot of people use that. So it's an established system. So I'm, Trent, is it the OSMS or?
I think that covered everything. We did, you know, had an extensive vetting process to determine what was the best software to move for with the city. We visited with many other cities and end users of various softwares. And CityWorks really is the one that's most used in our area. We've got the large user groups to rely on to help us in the future. And, you know, they are preferred vendor partners with Esri, our GIS software, as well as, as Clay mentioned, the forward-facing app, the Connect to Pearland.
So again, Mayor, the item B is the one time the integration startup, and then C will be the actual software, and that will be ongoing up to year three for that 100,000. So reasonable price for as much as it covers and is going to be doing for us and, you know, making us more efficient and stepping up that. So nothing added.
All right. Thank you for that report. With that, I'll open up to council for questions or comments.
Yeah. I asked for that to be pulled. Going through and looking at and reading through there, and I guess this is a multi-year type program that we're going into and just not for one year or so on there. But as you go through and you take a look at it, and actually, I guess, on, and B, it was page 14 of 247, talked about the impact fees that's on there. And it's supposed to be that, I guess, on, actually, on page 19 of 247, it says one year, 222,920. And then that is for the first year plus, I guess, that the maintenance fee is added into that number. So we're looking at that and we're seeing what we have been asked to approve. And given that, then the next year, we go into the second year, it's another 79,000 for the maintenance. And that's at a discounted rate. And then in the third year, it's $100,000 for maintenance. So in reality, what we're being asked to prove is something probably for three years, about $401,000 total in there. And that's not to count which city manager is talking about on C, which is in there, to that. And if you come in and you take a look at that on the C, when it says for the maintenance activity on the third year, it's 110,000. So I guess adding the additional 50,000 into that for that cost additional 10,000 for the maintenance fee. So it was, actually, it was a little bit confusing going through and finding what the dollars were that was going to be spent through there. And this is kind of, you know, this is what we've talked about many times in the budget activity is reoccurring costs. So, you know, so actually, what we're approving here would be just for a discount for two years, the first and second year discount. And then the third year is not a discount on the maintenance activity. So approving this, you're subsequently, you're approving a total of $401,920 is what you're approving if you approve this item on here. But that was the reason I pulled it, because it says it's for one thing, but when you get into it and you see what the costs are, and it's not, you know, we're not going to pay that kind of money. And then, you know, after the second year, not have it anymore as a programs in there. So, you know, if this is, say, a 10-year program that we're going to have, when you start looking at, you've probably got another $780,000 just in maintenance of the activity after the third year. So, you know, it would be good, and when we're going through this, and really, I don't know why we didn't add item D in here at the same time. But through that, when it's a conflict, when you get to item D, and it talks about the third year's 110,000, I guess 10,000 is for the additional part back. But it, it's good to know this as we go into it and see what the reoccurring cost is going to be. This is not going to be something that we're going to invest in today and get two discounts, you know, for the maintenance activity. And then at the third year, we start picking up the 110,000 per year after that, for as long as we have the system in place. So that was a part that was confusing here. So as the way I look at it, we're not coming in and approving 100 and something thousand dollars. Actually, when we're approving this, we're approving maintenance on here for two years, and the third year is 110 or 100,000, whichever one you want to leave on there. So, so really, what we're doing, we're approving roughly about $400,000 in this one, because when it comes out in next year's budget, we'll say, okay, well, yeah, you approved it in January or February the 8th to go forward to this. So this is a reoccurring cost of it, of on there. So that's what was confusing about this whole thing, and actually, how much we were actually approving on this with the additional cost in maintenance.
I've got a quick comment. In the presentation, it talks about 10 proposals to the RFP, and then four were selected. After review of those, I didn't see any information about bids from competitors anywhere in the presentation. Is there a reason that's not in there?
About, I'm sorry, competitors?
Competitive bids.
So this is not a, it's, the process would be a best value, be the right term, Trent? So it was a competitive proposals and shortlisted to those four, and then interviewed those and went from there? That's correct.
It would be nice to see the dollar bids of the other bidders, just to see how they...
So as we went through that process, it really boiled down to there's two main asset management companies that meet all the requirements and needs of our proposal, and the costs were very comparable.
I noticed we're in an interlocal agreement with the city of Rockwall allows both of us to utilize contracts held by the other city. What part of that contract are we utilizing that Rockwall already has?
That's being used for the New Edge implementation contract.
We don't have to pay for that?
No. When we have an interlocal agreement like that, we're just able to buy off some, a contract that they already have, and then we pay for, we pay for what we use.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Epperson, this is Alex Kamkar. On page seven of 26 on the handout, middle of the paragraph says, "A long-term contract was not an option from the vendor." Can you expound on that?
I'm trying to locate where that said. I think that was, we, we looked at trying to lock in the annual maintenance fees for longer than three years. We know that that's been something when we brought these software contracts to council in the past. We've sometimes looked at, you know, locking in additional years. And they did not offer or did not, basically didn't offer to extend that beyond the three-year pricing that they gave us today. And so, you know, as we move forward in the future, it'll be what their maintenance costs, you know, are at the time, which I would expect, like most of our softwares, that moves very little, kind of goes along with inflation year to year, much like our maintenance cost with New World or Microsoft or any of our softwares we use.
How long do you expect to build out?
One second, one second. Mr. Kamkar still got a question?
Yeah, one or two small items, and I'll be done, Mayor. Thank you so much. In that same paragraph, under recommended, or page seven, it says here, quote, "These ongoing costs will be split between the enterprise and general fund. Because this item includes parking wreck, city facilities, right-of-way traffic, drainage management, do we have a general idea of what that split will be between the enterprise fund and the general fund?"
We ran those numbers, and the best I can recall off the top of my head is we were somewhere around 60% on the enterprise fund and 40% on the general fund side.
Understood. Can I just get a follow-up on that later on? I know it's not a major item, but I would just be curious. Last item, and then I'll go. What are our termination provisions? I think I'm a little scarred by our discussions around the water billing and how we were not really able to move off of that software very quickly. For whatever reason, we get dissatisfied down the line. What are our obligations to get out of this, if there are any?
I don't know that there, if we're unsatisfied with it, there's not any obligations to continue with it. But, you know, Darren?
On a contract for the services with New Edge, the termination would be typically 30 days under our standard contracts. And then we only pay them for the services that they would have rendered up until that time.
Okay. So we don't have anything that is a longer clawback for the revenue stream or contracted amounts in the future beyond that termination date?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to piggyback off of Councilmember Kamkar's question, how long does staff expect it to take to build out the data, the layers, the assets, and essentially bring the whole program up to speed and start putting it to use for like long-term planning?
Sure. So we start from a really good place in that we have lots and lots of data and information and layers in our GIS system already today. That's, that's been, I think you're probably all fairly familiar with the amount of information and data we have there. So a big portion of it, especially where we're going to start on the water and wastewater side, we've got a lot of those data sets and layers. And so that'll go fairly quickly. It's in some of the other areas where we don't quite have all that. We'll have to start working on that. But the schedule with the implementer is that in six months, we'll be able to start going live with the system. And there may be still pieces we're building out and working on at that point, but we'll be able to start utilizing the work order system and have it ready to go.
So I guess the reason for that question is, if we have the initial term of three years, do we expect that the program itself will be fully, fully utilizable in that three year period to where we're getting the most value out of this?
My expectation is within a year, we're Um, my expectation is within a year, we're utilizing this fully, um, throughout all of our, you know, divisions that, that we plan to use it in right now. And we'll be seeing those benefits much sooner than the three years.
I, I don't want to, uh, push back too hard on this, but I would, uh, like to know if it's possible, um, even if we do pass this tonight to go back to, um, the vendor and ask them if they would reconsider a five-year, uh, plan for us? And at least try to give us some additional options to lock those rates in, um, because I just feel like building something out like this, especially if you start moving forward with CIPs and identifying additional things, upgrading layers. And there may be things that we don't expect. I think three years is a good kind of test pilot term for me in my brain, and trying to think long-term, I think five would be really good for us to help budget. Um, kind of moving off of that, um, Clay, you mentioned that it, uh, will integrate with our Connect to Pearland app. I was wondering if you could walk me through, currently, we get residents who say that they'll put in a, a request on Connect to Pearland, and that seems to be closed out quickly. Um, will this give the ability to provide that follow-up for residents if they put in a request on the app to have a circular work order environment? Answer is yes, but Trent, you want to explain a little bit more, I guess?
Sure, so the, the existing, um, forward-facing app, um, that, that is really, you know, it takes the information. And then I believe it, it does some dissemination as to who that goes to, but it does it via email. And then that's tracked, you know, with whatever department that goes to with their internal, whether it's a spreadsheet, um, piece of paper. Um, I know in public works, it does go into the HTE work order system. But then when those things are closed out and pulled back and, and closed out in the work order system, somebody has to manually make sure they follow back through in the Connect to Pearland app to close those things out. Um, these, the, the, those two companies are City Works, and then the company that, that makes the Connect to Pearland app are Business Partners. Or have a business partner relationship to where those, those things work seamlessly. So, um, in the future, when somebody puts something in on the app, it'll be routed through the app, but it'll create the work order. It'll go to the division or department that, that is responsible for that, create a work order for them as they work through that work order, uh, system, you know? Do their investigation, uh, the work and the closeout, it'll seamlessly go back through the Connect to Pearland app to notify, um, the user. And I believe we can also set it up to where as it progresses through that, those stages, um, people can see where that request is.
Yeah, because I think that's something I would really love to see from the resident communication side, to really make sure that they're updated as it progresses. Uh, I see and can understand the frustration of somebody putting in a request and it immediately being closed out whenever it's sent somewhere. Um, and so there's another, uh, I guess related to that, if currently somebody puts in a request and it's, let's say for, uh, uh, they're saying a water meter or something, a water main is broken, and there's water spewing out. And then we go out there and it turns out it's not water leaking from a main, but let's say it's an SSO or something like that, it's closed out because it's sent somewhere else. Is there a way to track that even saying that it, it's not exactly what was reported, but they still want to be updated?
So we're going to quickly get out of my depths, but my understanding in discussing, you know, all the things you can do, uh, with the software is that, uh, when, when they come in like that, it doesn't, you know, it, it, it takes another step on our staff's end before a true work order is created. So if they go out and see, oh, it's not a water main, it's a sanitary sewer overflow, then the work order that gets created from that investigation is going to say sanitary sewer overflow. But it's still going to be linked back to the original request. And anything that happens from there on, uh, through the closeout and is communicated back to the original requester, um, you know, they'll see all that.
Okay, that's, that's awesome. Um, and then, let's see, the assets that are put into this, I, I've seen kind of how they get entered into the GIS with the layers. And then on the layers, you can input all sorts of information that's relevant to those assets. Um, are we able to, to create individualized maintenance schedules for the individual assets, or are they going to be treated as classes?
So I think we can go as, uh, far down in the depths as we want to and as high level as we want to. So when you, and, and it depends on your asset. If you, you know, if you're looking at, uh, water mains, you're going to look at segments of pipe, um, and, and, but if you're looking at a wastewater treatment plant, um, you're going to have that broken down into your blowers and your pumps and your, um, you know, your other equipment that, that is, is onsite there. And I, and even within, um, you know, a, a pump, you can have, you can have it scheduled for its regular preventative maintenance things. Um, and then, of course, anything else that happens to it can be, you know, tracked as well. And you, you can track those down to almost the bolt on those things. That's beyond what we do, and we've just heard some people that took it that far and then said, little too far and backed off. But you can go, uh, very, very deep into, uh, you know, whatever your asset is.
Got it, so if we do have a very sensitive piece of equipment or something that we did want to drill down, we can, that's great. Um, okay, so this is not a question, but just a statement that I, I think this is great. This is something that I've been asking for, for some time, and to see something of this level that we can start implementing, I, I think is going to save us as a city a lot of money moving forward. Being able to get ahead of maintenance and be proactive and not reactive, things that we've talked about, um, you know, for years now. Um, so I think this is a really great step in the right direction. I'm excited to see where this goes. Um, my understanding though, we're going to have additional partners that are going to have to come on and help us create layers and things like that as we move forward, is that correct?
Y- yes, sir. So one of the contracts before you tonight is the integrator, which they'll take our existing, you know, GIS layers, um, and, and build that into the asset management system and help us build those workflows, build exactly how we want it to work.
Okay, so just to be really, you know, clear and transparent, there will be more than likely, uh, additional costs associated with this program rolling out. However, this is the foundation for this program.
Th- this is all of the cost for rolling it out that you, you have before you in these two items tonight. The, really, the only cost going forward is if we, you know, see a need in one particular area where we may want, you know, a consultant to help us with that. Um, but aside from that, um, this, this will take care of getting us up in all our, all of our divisions and departments we've identified initially. Um, and then, uh, we'll just have the ongoing software maintenance cost for the future years.
Right, so we're already generating things like PCI stuff like that, it would just go into the system now and integrate system-wide, is that?
Yes, sir, so if you, if you take our, um, when we generated that PCI from our street inventory and sidewalk inventory, that, that data now can go into a system where it's really live and useful.
Okay, all right, fantastic, that's all I have for now, Mayor, thank you.
A quick question, in, in the packet, it looks like this was, the RFP was issued back in the beginning of nineteen? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that was the original, when we went out for the RFP.
What have we been doing for the past two years?
We've taken a long road to make sure we're getting in the right place, uh, before we move forward with this. Um, and, and, you know, there was, uh, as, you know, and we initially discussed, or as was mentioned, there were many companies that, that submitted. It was really trying to see which of those actually provide what we were asking for, something that ties in with our GIS system, uh, ties in with a forward-looking, uh, applica- uh, application, whether it be Connect to Pearland or a different one. Um, and really provides, um, that scheduling of preventative maintenance as well as tracking all your work orders. And so it was just, you, you know, vetting through some of the different things that were put in front of us and, and making sure that the direction we headed in provided all those benefits, provided all those things that we need to operate efficiently. And then, uh, we kind of took it a step beyond that, we got it down to a couple of companies, uh, a couple of, couple of softwares. And then we started visiting with, uh, different cities, uh, Gulf Coast Water Authority, multiple cities that operated those. Um, and then boiled down to, um, the, 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 uh, recommended, uh, software, City Works. And then we wanted to make sure we had the correct implementer that had had a lot of success in this area, um, with the implementation. So, um, it, it took a while, um, it took a while to get the scope where we needed it. And, uh, but it was, a, a lot of it was really doing our due diligence to make sure we get this right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I mean, in regards to this, you know, when we get into budget, we talk about needs and wants, this seems really cool. Um, I, I love the technology and the usefulness, but, I mean, it's, in, in my opinion, it's, it's more of a want than a need. Um, and when we talk about all this integration and all this cool technology, I mean, the elephant in the room is still the frigging water bills. And we can't get a, a water bill done right, and we're going to bite off on this and implement this across the assets. And, I mean, that, that's where I, that, that's where I struggle. And, and maybe if we were, we were a hundred, a hundred percent on implementation of other high-tech projects, this would be great. But as of right now, uh, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't think we need an additional consultant implementing a new project, I mean, when we can't handle what we've got. You don't have to respond, but that's, that's my stance on it.
Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, I, I kind of wanted to take it out from, I, I feel like we're really in the weeds on a lot of that. Like what the reality of this is here is we have over a billion dollars in city assets that we're tracking on spreadsheets and post-it notes. And, and so i- if you care about, um, a, a, about these big issues that I, I don't think are wants, I think are very much needs, which are, you know, our city being solvent in the long term and being able to deal with the depreciation of a billion dollars worth of assets, uh, if you want to keep the costs down on these items, uh, and repair them before they're in a total state of crisis. Uh, and then we, we also seem to have these unexpected bills that kind of come up, just because again, we're using post-it notes to try to track a, a billion dollars worth of assets as diverse as, you know, vehicles and, and city buildings and, and sidewalks. And so I, I, I think if you want to be a more competent city, uh, in the long term, and, and you want to have a handle on these things, and you, you want to save money, and you want to be responsible. I mean, we really have to have a, a better way to track this. And, uh, a- and that's not even to say, we just want to keep our streets and pipes and police cars in good shape, um, in, in a more systematic way. So the, we, we spend a lot of time kind of talking about the details. I, I think the big picture is we, o- on a lot of issues, whether it's on, you know, oh, you know, this repair thing came up at the wreck, or this roof needs to be replaced, or, or these pipes are in bad shape. I mean, we just don't have good visibility into it. And I, I think we could raise the caliber of our conversations and make better decisions, save costs, and be more fiscally responsible if we had the, the data somewhere other than a post-it note.
Quick question, um, does this software also give us the ability to, for example, we're building several, you know, we've broken ground on several facilities in the last couple of months. Uh, so, you know, that's all going to be brand new at the end of this year, about, you know, six months, you know, we'll have this up and running. Will those, will this also give us life cycle, tracking life cycle, not cost, but life cycle, um, uh, the, the total life cycle of an asset? So whether it's a building, uh, a lift station, those types of things. So it, it can help project, uh, maintenance, uh, certain maintenance, but like you mentioned, a roof, you know, a, you know, a roof is not going to typically span the, the full life cycle of a building. You're going to have to change that roof, you know, out, given certain amount of times, you know, before the useful life of a, of a building, for example, is gone. So will this help us better plan for life cycle cost?
Y- yes, sir. It's, you know, take a building example, we'll have, uh, the building and then the assets within the building, so your HVAC system, your roof system, those sort of things. So, um, you know, we can project, you know, a roof should last X number of years, the HVAC system should last X number of years. And so, y- you know, it's not only scheduling your preventative maintenance to make those last as long as possible, it's also, you can, you know, you can build out your, um, your cost over the years of, I need to replace, you know, this roof this year, you know, the roof from this other building in the next year. And really build out your, your operation and capital cost.
And, and I know it's a little harder when you're talking things underground, obviously streets and sidewalks, which you can see and you can drive over and you can, you can tell. But obviously, you know, water and sewer, it's a little harder to know, you know, what's happening underground because you can't see it. Uh, but at the same time, I guess it, it will know when things are, uh, installed, so we understand, you know, the age of, of infrastructure that's below ground.
Yes, sir, understand the age, um, you know, and, and then since now we've got, uh, we've got an easy mechanism for tracking work orders and where they are, you know, located, um, in the, in the, um, the, uh, GIS side of things. Um, if you're having issues, you know, if you, if you have an area where you're having to do significant manhole repairs in, in a, a shorter duration than you should have to, um, you know, you can see that on a heat map, and you can go, okay, what, what do we have going on out here? We have higher, um, gases in the sewer system out there, we need to plan on, you know, rehabbing those manholes on a, on a six-year cycle instead of a ten-year cycle or something like that. So it, it'll help with that, even though it is underground, there's some things you can, you know, help with along those lines.
Okay, that's all I had, just a couple of questions. Uh, Woody's got one last?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind. Um, as a part of this on here, uh, it says eight tasks would take about six months. And then after that, they would come in and train the employees on being able to use it after they get it all installed.
Well, we'll be integral in the, in the actual installation and integration, and there'll be training going on throughout. There's, you know, some of the modules will be trained on once we get to the end of it.
As a part of that, uh, the information you, you are putting in here, um, is that part of the assets that would be the management part on assets of what we actually have? You know, in the streets and the asset of it and, and the cost of it and what have you?
So you're asking where?
Asset management of it, like Gatsby was.
We've already got the inventory of the assets, those are.
We have the inventory in GIS or other, you know, surveys we've done, like for the streets and sidewalks. I think the one area where we're probably lacking in being able to put everything in the system is, uh, we've, uh, only done a facilities assessment at three of our, three of our larger facilities. So we've got some facilities assessment that'll need to occur to be able to get those assets in the system.
Okay.
So where, where are the post-it notes? And I guess my.
To defend our staff, you know, we're a little, you know, whereas a lot of it's manual, a lot of it's not all in the same spot. You know, they, they've done a good job with using as much technology as they can, um, utilizing the GIS, utilizing, uh, being able to collect data in the field with field dots, field devices that goes into our GIS system. It's just not all integrated. So, um, you know, to give them some credit, we're, we're, we, we do it as best we can without having that integrated system.
Yeah, and I guess to clarify my comments, this system's great. I mean, I see where, where, where work on the long term. I don't know that right now is the time to squeeze off on an additional implementation. So, yeah, is it, is it, is it good? Is it going to help us just like the PCI index? Are, are we going to get there? Is that where we need to be? Yes, but right now, we're sitting here where we don't have the trust of the, the citizenry on a simple water bill. And I don't, this is a, you know, six months to roll out with, with, with IT and public works, and I, I would rather see the, the time spent cleaning up the issues we're already aware of.
I would, I would just say that, look, I, I don't think there's ever an opportunity to not try and improve the resources of our staff and let them have better opportunity to do a good job. And we can tie in any mistake that we make and say, well, until we get this right, we can't invest. But it's just a short-sighted mentality. I mean, the, whether or not we have an incorrect water bill within point nine percent of our entire city, and we implement a system that's supposed to improve the effectiveness and the efficiency of our staff to totally, wholly unrelated items. Um, our staff is the implementers of all that we talk about here. We don't give them, uh, the opportunity and the resources to do the job efficiently and effectively, then we're just blowviators. We don't do anything other than talk to ourselves. They're the ones that implement all of this. And to cut them off the needs and say, well, I just don't think you deserve the best and the brightest tools, so go out there and work twice as hard and do half as much. It's just not a message that I think we should send to staff. I think we need to give them, this is a well-vetted system. I can tell you, it probably doesn't get us all the way as to where we need to be in order to be properly, uh, updated on asset management, but it'll get us where we need to be. So I, I think it's, it's not really a choice of, um, should we, it's why haven't we done it already? Um, I mean, it's, it's just something I think we have to, to move forward. At, anytime we have an opportunity to give our staff better tools so they can more effectively and efficiently do their job, we should jump at it. It allow, they're, they're all force multipliers, it lets them do their jobs better, and ultimately, that's a savings to the, to the city. When we don't have to hire two or three more people to run a department because the software's helping them and it reduces the man-hours, that ends up being a savings to the citizens.
Mayor, if I could, um, uh, there was a statement, I can't remember the exact meeting, but it was, uh, one of our vendors, when we were initially talking about the water billing issue, there was a statement saying that if we had invested in the dashboard plugins for the, for the technology that we did have, that the issue would have been caught a lot earlier. And to me, this is the dashboard for our assets. So this is a first step, I think, in, uh, providing the atmosphere to build trust with our residents by being proactive and really investing. by being proactive and really investing, like I said, as Councilmember Perez pointed out, equipping our staff with the right tools to really deliver and stay on top of things, give these high-level, you know, views so that they can catch things ahead of time. So that's, that's kind of how I'm looking at this, and I'm excited that we're moving in this direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Member, Member Carbone, this is Member Kamkar. I think your concerns are warranted. I have very little city trust. But our COVID-19 rollout, the, the staff proved they could do it. The reality of the situation is this, this doesn't come in a vacuum. We're doing over a quarter billion dollar improvements in the next 24, 36 months. It is better off to start this now than it is to wait until we've done all those improvements and load them in later. But I am extremely reticent that we do this slowly and cautiously, but doing nothing is not the answer. The second thing that I have gigantic reticence is we've taken, what, almost two years to select these people? And they will be longer than a three-year contract. I would really push back on that item and say that we probably should amend this prior to approving it, that we ask for a longer-term contract. They're going to have us by the shortened curly's three years from now, and we don't know what that cost will look like. I'd rather have a longer run look at what that cost is so we can keep the cost down.
Darren, can you remind us of the policy we have on the terms of our contracts that we established in the last few years?
City policy is, was adopted, was a three-year term with, with the exception, I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't it require a super majority of council if we were going to exceed three years? I believe it requires a super majority.
The three-year term is not by their election wholly, it's our election to not enter?
That is our, that is our current policy.
I think just to clarify.
There were exceptions, for instance, if we were purchasing commodities, utilities, things of that nature.
Waste management.
Correct.
And to clarify on the ongoing cost beyond the three years, this, that's the software maintenance cost. And as we've seen with all of our other software, that, that third year is the 100% cost. And we do not see, you know, that those go up significantly year to year. It's, it's usually inflationary or flat. And we have many, many softwares that, you know, while when we initially purchased them, had some cost of what that's going to be for the first few years, most of them, it's just a, basically a year-to-year thing.
Okay. So with that, lots of good discussion, comments. Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Kamkar? Member Kamkar?
He put a thumb up.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
No.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No for right now.
The motion fails four to three.
Failed. It passed, we had four, we had four.
All right, four to three.
One, two, three, four.
Four to three.
You scared me.
Motion, motion passes four to three.
You scared both the trends at the same time.
I apologize for that.
And Mayor Proton, would you put item C on the table?
Yes, sir. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2021-31. So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I think we've already received a staff report on this and discussed it amongst the, ourselves on the last. Was there any comments or questions on item C? It is related to B.
You know, I just go back to what I had First Mayor on there talking about, you know, on the cost and the variation in the cost. But one other thing, when we look at the eight tasks that needs to be implemented here are, and it has been brought up, I think, on councilman talking about the problems that we've got in the water side. As we're going through and implementing this in now, are we going to be using the same people that are trying to go in and find out where we're at and where the problem is on the water side to get the billing straight? Or are they going to be the ones that's going to be implementing this and managing this side of it as trying to do the other thing that we need to get taken care of now?
I don't know if there's a question there, but you're speaking of staff or?
Yeah, the staff.
Oh.
Because you got, you got, you got eight things that you need to task, that you need to come in and do now. End up training. So are those going to be the same staff that's doing the implementation and getting trained for this? Are they the same staff that's working on trying to solve this problem with the billing?
The council saw the RAFTTELLIS report. It, their analysis showed 100% of the bills were accurate in the calculations of those. Council adopted last spring a 3230 plan that's being implemented successfully. And council's seen those reports in the dashboard that shows how that gap's being closed since the council adopted that. There's a series of other improvements that we've reported on regularly, almost weekly, and you've seen that. And, and this work is a lot of public works, but touches other departments. And, you know, the, the staff will welcome having this system in place. It's going to make them more effective and efficient. And the six-month run-up is very doable and will be done very deliberately and with due consideration and involve the right people at the right time so that it comes off successfully. So it will not interfere whatsoever with any of the other improvements we're going in this large organization.
Okay, so nobody that is working out, doing the stuff on the water billing, getting all that taken care of, so when rolling back out to the public, going, none of them would be involved in any of the eight?
No, no. There's people involved. I mean, there's IT people that are working on JS that are keeping the dashboard up, and they'll be working on this as well. So, but there's capacity within our staff to be able to do this.
Okay, let it go.
Seeing other, any other comments or questions? Madam Secretary, call for the vote on item C.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
No.
Member Perez?
Yes.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
The motion passes four to three.
All right. Moving forward to item E as an echo. Councilmember Kamkar, would you place that on the table for us?
Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2021-22.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a recommendation for acquisition of three vehicles off one of the buy boards. And this is for a replacement vehicle in fire parks and wreck in public works. Range and age, years of service between nine for the lowest and 16 and 17 for the other two, which have not only the miles, but also the hours of service. So they're up for the next ones and trying to catch us up on the backlog of deferred fleet replacements. Nothing to add.
All right, that's staff report. Do we have any council questions?
I do. Yeah, looking at the mileage on these, the nine-year-old Chevy Tahoe has 68,796 miles on it. The other two are in their 90s. I've got two vehicles at home that have more mileage than these three do, and they're running fine. Just seems like those vehicles, especially the, the one with 68,000, and you've got a 250 and a 450, those are probably diesels. That's low mileage for a diesel, even though they are, you know, 16, 17 years old. It seems like we could get a few more years out of those. Just my opinion, it seems more like a want item than a need item. That's all I have.
Any other comments or questions?
Can you, can you kind of help us to understand what the threshold is for replacement vehicles? We have this further in the agenda as well. I was going to kind of ask the same question.
Sure, I can take that. So, you know, we're looking at, you know, our years of service as well as mileage, and then the maintenance records as well. So a lot of these vehicles, while they may not have the hour, the mileage on them, they're, they spend a lot of time on job sites or on incident sites where they run a lot of hours up and above what you would normally expect for a vehicle of that mileage. So it's, it's a combination of the years, the maintenance records, as well as the mileage as far as how we recommend vehicles for replacement.
I mean, I would tend to agree with Member Little in that, based on the mileage, they look like there's, there's, there's more years of service life. If there's something else that's the threshold, I'm not going to say, you know, I tend to trust staff and what they're, what they're telling us. So, you know, I'm not going to come in cynically and say, because it's 68,000 miles and nine years of service, it doesn't deserve to be replaced if our, if our fleet maintenance says, I'm tired of working on this thing because it breaks every week. But perhaps in future awards, we get some, maybe a little bit better understanding, or maybe in a Thursday write-out, we get a little better understanding of comprehensively why we're looking at the vehicles. Or we set a metric of, we don't, we as a council set a metric of, we don't replace vehicles that have under 150,000 miles on it. I mean, I think we can give that guidance if that's a concern of ours. I'd say my general belief is it's cheaper to repair than replace. But I don't know these vehicles well enough to know how often they're having to be repaired. So I'll support it, but I think maybe, maybe we can either establish a policy internally or with the council about, you know, where the thresholds are for us if we have concerns about this, that y'all have better guidance, or we come up with better information so there's, there's less questions. Because it does look kind of odd.
I got a quick question. This is a point of order. I want to make sure Councilmember Kamkar said so move. We had a viewer ask that they didn't hear an actual motion for the table. We did get a second. Darren, what do we need to do there? I just?
Yes, actually, Councilmember Kamkar did make the motion. And, and then following that, I believe it was Councilmember Little who seconded the motion.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure that, just wanted to make sure we were good. All right. I do have a, on that, on this question, on E, obviously, the wear and tear on these types of vehicles are going to be a little bit different than maybe mine in my truck. But having said that, generally speaking, I don't know if in the metric is how many dollars we're spending on maintenance. I mean, it's, it goes back to, are we repairing it once a month? Are we repairing it, you know, just doing normal routine, you know, maintenance? Obviously tires and oil and those types of things. And, and that may ultimately be in a, in a metric moving forward. Just because it's got certain miles on it may also not be necessary. And that's not applied to every vehicle. We have vehicles, as we see later, that are, that are more machinery, that aren't going to have miles. They're going to have hours of use, and it's, it's going to get to how many dollars are put into maintenance. At some point in time, it's better to buy new than continue the dollars of maintenance. And I think that ought to be another metric that's in some of these vehicles.
And, and that is part of the metric. And, you know, it's also looked at from a standpoint, especially on equipment, is downtime. Because you can have a piece of equipment that maybe as it adds up over the year, the repairs aren't extensive, but the piece of equipment is out 50% of the time. We've had that on bucket trucks and street sweepers.
Yeah, you can't use it if it's not available.
Yeah. Is it possible, you may have a one-page Thursday memo that you could send us prior to the February 20th budget meeting to where if you could help communicate to us the standard for which vehicles are determined for replacement by fleet management? And we can discuss that possibly as a quick two-paragraph item in, in, on, in February as to whether we want to modify any kind of policies or give y'all better guidance?
Yes, we've got that. And, you know, it's generally, that's what the recommendation is based on each year. And then we work down through the list as far as we can with the amount of budget we can actually allocate to that. And, you know, as we saw with the Crown Vics, year over year, you know, it took a long time to replace those. So it's, we're still catching up even with these purchases.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
This would be why we just approved a flashy new software to tell us we need to replace these type of assets.
Well, the other ones are kind of buried in the ground. It's hard to do maintenance on them without digging them up.
It would be interesting to see what staff's already got put together.
Trucks are lasting a lot longer. I've been trying to buy a used truck. And Ford trucks right now, 180, 220,000 miles and $24,000 for 13. I mean, you go to any of these dealerships and they say, you know, truck is just unbelievable. You know, but they're very, I guess, the Fords and the Chevrolets and the Dodges. You know, I guess if you take care of them, all of them is way over 100,000 miles on there to do that. But the cost is, is, matter of fact, I'm going to go look at one tomorrow. But the thing about it is just absolutely unbelievable. Even the dealerships say that, hey, this is truck country, and we can get the top dollar for a used truck that's eight to 10 years old on there. So, but then.
An interest you in a 2012 Chevy Tahoe with 68,000 miles?
Yeah.
Let's, let's go ahead and vote on, let's go ahead and vote on this.
Mayor, if I could, I, I would like to also see those numbers prior to a vote. So I mean, I would actually be okay with postponing this to a future meeting pending getting some additional feedback on maintenance costs, things like that. If there's a second for that, I would make the motion to postpone for the next meeting.
There's a second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second on a postponement. All right. With that?
To what date?
Next, next meeting.
Next regular council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Oh, two weeks.
Yes, sir.
February 22nd, ask and answer some of those questions. Be back on the agenda. Madam Secretary, let's offer the vote on that.
Hey, this would be to vote on the postponement of the meeting to the next scheduled city council regular meeting. Councilmember Kamkar?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Sure, why not? Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero to postpone this item to the next city council regular meeting.
All right.
Yeah, I'd just like to say real quick, once we have this asset management system in place that four of my fellow councilmen approved, going forward, when we have items on the agenda where we're replacing capital assets, why can't we attach the maintenance report or the asset report to it so we can see a little background on how this asset's been taken care of? It would enable us to make better decisions.
That data should be available to us at all times though, correct?
Sure, and it may be more appropriate to have that available when we go through the budgeting process, approving what vehicles would be purchased in that forthcoming budget year.
I think that's a good point, but let's move on our agenda since we're past the item now.
One item, really, look quickly, can I just add the information for the motor pool fund? What is the balance? That wasn't in the write-out. And so I'd like to have that when we talk about this two weeks from now.
So I'm not even sure what that request was. I'm sorry, Mr. Kamkar. Let's move on to new business. Number seven, new business. We're going to take item, if, if there's any, if there's no objection, items one, two, and three are same owner, same overall tract of land. And so if there's no objections with that, all three captions have to be read in its entirety. So our city attorney has graciously agreed to do that. After that, I'll kick it to Mr. Perez to place the motion. How's that?
I shall move as the attorney tells me to.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go ahead and start this marathon reading here. Essentially, this will be my reading, all three of these captions. It's going to be recommended that R2021-13, 2021-14, and 2021-15 all be considered with one vote. And so I'm going to read all three captions at the same time. And then after that, if a council member could so move, and then receive a second at that point. And then I'll do any explanation after I read the caption. Resolution of the city council, the city of Pearland, Texas authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire water line easement and temporary construction easement on certain property for the FM 1128 Waterline Project, being a tract of land containing 0.1221 acre, located within the HTMBRR company survey, abstract 549, Breaux County, Texas, and being a portion of Lot 1 of the Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision. Section 24, recorded in volume 2, page 89 of the Breaux County plat records. Said .1221 acre tract being a tract being a portion of a culled 4.9463 acre tract recorded in the name of Fuq Manmai in BCCF number 90010684 for the construction and maintenance of water line improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or his designated me and any other city officials to take actions that are necessary to acquire said property located within city by donation of purchase or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain. 2021-14, a resolution of the city council, the city of Pearland, Texas authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire water line easement and temporary construction easement on certain property for the FM 1128 Waterline Project, being a tract of land containing 0.1221 acre, located within the HTMBRR company survey, abstract 549, Breaux County, Texas, and being a portion of Lot 1 of the Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision, section 24, recorded in volume two, page 89 of Breaux County Platt records, said 0.1221 acre tract being a portion of culled 4.95 acre tract, recorded in the name of Uqmai and Wet Don in BCCF number 9000721 for the construction and maintenance of water line improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or his designated me and any other officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of eminent domain. And finally, 2021-15, resolution, city council, the city of Pearland, Texas authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire water line easement and temporary construction easement on certain property for the FM 1128 Waterline Project, being a tract of land containing 0.2273 acres, located in the HTMBRR company survey, abstract 549, Breaux County, Texas, and being a portion of Lot 2 of the Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision, section 24, recorded in volume two, page 89 of Breaux County Platt records, said 0.2273 acre tract being a portion of a culled 10 acre tract recorded in the name of Teng Mai and Shuang Mai in BCCF number 91011897 for the construction and maintenance of water line improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or his designated me and any other city officials to take necessary actions, such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of eminent domain.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for items one, two, and three. Any staff report?
Yes, Mayor, this is, all three of these tracks, as you indicated earlier, are, are in the same family of ownership. Y'all may be familiar, the, these properties is Joseph's Nursery. It's located there at 1128 and, and Bailey Road. These are being, the water line is being acquired for the purpose of putting in, again, a water line, but it's associated with the Massey Oaks Development. It's being necessitated by that development, and so we're acquiring these easements. All of these property owners have been notified. They've been given a copy of the appraisal. They've, a final offer has been made. There's not been a, a response with respect to a counter offer up to this point. And so the next step in that process is to go ahead and proceed with imminent domain hearing. And as we do always, we're, we're always willing to work up until the date of the hearing to try to get these matters resolved. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time.
So we're into, thanks for the staff report. Any council questions or comments?
My only comment is, they have some, some use of the facility that we're taking. Obviously, it's a, it looks like it's a, it's a nursery, so they don't have any structures. But would we write into the, into the easement that their allowance to continue to use that property for the nursery facility for them to store or put in some type of pavement system on there? So after we take it, we don't necessarily make, force them to lose a portion of their business?
The appraisal contemplates the fact that they'll still have the use of the property. And as they do today, with it being an underlying water easement, as a result, the appraisal did not consider any damages to the remainder. Had it, had it had an impact on the user or the property owner, it would have calculated damage to the remainder, but, but there is none.
And that'll be written in the, in the language of the easement, not just presented?
No, actually, we, in this case, because we're going through this process, it'll be acquired by a judgment. It will not be acquired by easement. When we, when property owners do come back and work with us, we can put language into easements and get those recorded through settlements and when we work with them. But in this particular case, they have not come back with a counter offer, so we'll, we'll proceed to the imminent domain hearing.
Any other questions or comments? All right. With that, Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr? Member Cam Carr, can you unmute your mic, please?
There you go.
Okay, heard you there. Thank you.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R2021-13, our, resolution number R2021-14, and resolution number R2021-15.
All right, thank you. And just housekeeping item, it looks like Mr. Cam Carr, when you push the button, you're already, you're already saying it and it's not showing up on our end just yet. So give it about a three second delay. Appreciate it. With that, let's move to council member Owens. Put new business item number four on the table, please.
Consideration possible action resolution number R2021-21, so moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and multiple seconds. With that, staff report?
Scroll up the agenda. Make sure I'm on the right one. Right, so this is our recommendation for acquiring as budgeted, three pieces of heavy equipment for our public works operations. Two of those are gradealls with the hours and service years that are noted there. The third is a backhoe. And so buying those off the byboard for the $840,000 as noted out of the fleet replacement fund.
All right, that completes your staff report?
It does.
All right. With that, any comments or questions from council? Councilor Owens?
Yeah. It was mentioned earlier, which is true, that, you know, that the units out there is about hours of operation. And when we come in to look at the gradeall at 18 years service, we're talking about an average of 32 hours a month of operation on there. And then on 11, gradeall, you're, you're looking at 16 hours a month. So it don't look like they're heavily used. Now, the backhoe is, it's probably time for that one to go. But the other two, they're not used that frequent, it doesn't seem over there. Because it, one at 18 years, it's only 391 hours over a, you know, a year is, is what it's actually used and been used. And I don't know, is it, the less amount of hours on operation, is that because it's been, been in service quite a bit or, or what? But, you know, the, the year's service really don't make that much difference. It's hours of operation on these and, like on a vehicle or anything. But it just seems like, you know, for almost a million dollars, and I don't know if it's time that we get rid of those two. The backhoe, probably, sure, on there because of the 12,000 hours and it's 17 years old, but it's used more in the city than, than the gradealls are. So I just, you know, for the number of hours that each one of those gradealls are doing, and based on a month, it's just not heavily operated on, you know, during a, during a month, not being used or what have you. So I don't know if it's time to get those out as it is right now. If, if it's been some high cost and, and there on the maintenance activity and not being able to use them out in the field, that's probably a little bit of a different story. But the thing on, on that. So that's what I'm looking at right now is, you know, $840,000 for three pieces of equipment that, for our construction side of the business, it's not a whole lot of hours on those vehicles, on those gradealls.
Mayor, if you allow, I think our fleet manager, if Joshua can tune in, Jacoby, might be able to answer that, or whatever the council's preference is.
Is he online?
Hey, thank you, Clay, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So these pieces of equipment have basically been fighting, whether, fighting the elements, fighting, you know, the construction use. And basically, there's been a lot of downtime on these pieces of equipment. The maintenance costs are fairly high. And so that's what's drawing us to want to replace these pieces of equipment. Not only are maintenance costs high, they do meet the, the standard as far as replacing equipment according to our SOP for our motor pool. And so that's the recommendation to replace these pieces of equipment.
Okay, thank you. Any other council questions, comments?
Mayor, if I may, I think what, if I could, council member Owens was trying to say is that we're in the same situation with this as we were in the consent agenda counterpart. So if it's the will of council, I would like to see what that SOP is, what the maintenance costs are for this as well. So I would like to motion to postpone this as well to the next regular council meeting.
We have a motion and, we have a motion and a second to postpone to the 22nd agenda. Is that right? All right. So with that, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to postpone this item to the next city council regular meeting.
All right. So with that, we'll move to new business item number five. Back to council member Orlando. Place that on the table, please.
Consideration impossible action resolution number R2021-27, so moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. Well, this is a replacements budget for the Gap Vax truck. And as this memo states, was used heavily. It is no longer, I think there was even a question during the budget process. And we explained how it's rusted out, can't be serviced. So we are not doing, as this says in the memo, in-house culvert cleaning for our drainage maintenance operations as we want and should be doing. And so council may recall too, that this, when we had our first reimbursements from the tourist number two for the city's Broadway work, when we made our budget amendment, we dedicated that tranche to the fleet replacement to try to boost that and get that fund where it needs to be. And this is one of the items that is at the top of the list for that. So that money's being used as we just made that budget amendment late in the fall. Nothing to add.
Before we start discussing this, Councilman Hernandez, are you going to make a motion to continue this until we have maintenance reports?
No, sir. This and I have a little bit different opinion on. I would, I was wondering if your staff could. It looks at 421. This has a useful lifespan of 10 years. It's been out of service for how long? It doesn't say in the packet, but it's not currently in service, correct?
That's correct. I believe when we were discussing it in the budget cycle last year, that's about the time that it was taken out of service.
Okay. And so are we using a third party for that? Or are we just not performing the, this clean out services?
So I believe we've got, you know, we've got our ditch cleaning contract. And I think, I believe we have a means of doing it through a contract at this point. But we're probably not doing it to the amount we need to. You know, when we use our gradealls to do our own ditch cleaning and things like that, we need to be going along and making sure the culverts are clean. We also then don't have availability when there's an issue with leaves or other debris and inlets to go deal with those problems as well.
Okay. So the third party contract, if I break this down over 10 years, which it looks like this truck has lasted way more than 10 years, but just roughly would be $42,000 a year useful lifespan if we make this expenditure. I guess the point that you're trying to drive home though, is that it's less convenient and sometimes we maybe forego cleaning because of scheduling issues with third parties?
So I've been corrected. We're actually relying on DD4 for help when they're available right now as opposed to contracting any of this out.
I see. Okay. And is it same issue with DD4, just scheduling if they're available or not available? Sometimes we get service, sometimes we don't?
Yeah, it's kind of like when we used to rely on them, them to haul our heavy equipment around with their haul trailer. They're using that to haul their own equipment around all the time. So we moved to having our own and they've got use of their own equipment most of the time. So it's, you know, significant issues when we can get them to come out and deal with them.
So I guess I do see this as more of a little bit, a little bit more of a critical function that we need to get back to performing. I don't have as big of an issue, but I would like to, in the future, kind of see what the cost would be if we did have a third party perform this instead of trying to do everything in-house, just to compare those two. But I, I have no issue with this as of right now. I'll let the rest of council weigh in. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R2021-27.
All right. Council member Carbone, item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R2021-23, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. This is a maintenance function, as the memo describes, for our public works utilities operation. We did, it was at the end of its renewal period, so we did put it out. We did only get the one bid back. Council, who's been around for a while, may require that we've pinned this, this service down from the scope. It used to run, you know, $700,000, $800,000 each year. But that included on-call emergency provision. So this is really more the, the base operations, if you will, for that. So for that, you know, this is the pricing we got back from them. They performed well. But, you know, we put it out there for public consumption as we do with all these things. And this is the one that came back on this. Nothing to add.
Complete your staff report?
Yes, sir.
With that, any questions or comments from council? Seeing no one moving that direction. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R2021-23.
All right. And item number seven, Mayor Pro Tim Hernandez, would you place that on?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number 1267-2, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
So, so Mayor and Council, I'll ask Assistant City Manager Ron Frazier to introduce this, but would only note again, as was read, this is a first and only, we've done, been doing these public safeties for that. And as such, it would require five votes and the affirmative to enact. But Mr. Frazier will give you some of the background and bring this to you.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just gave the city manager incorrect information. He said five and I said yes, but it's actually six votes. It will require six, a super majority of six votes to approve since it is an emergency item.
So call to our attention, a year or so ago from police department, that other municipalities around ours were adjusting their sex offender residency ordinances to reflect a larger buffer between places where children congregate and places where registered sex offenders with child victims were allowed to reside. Surrounding municipalities have increased their buffers to 2,000 and 2,500 feet. We're not allowed to, to raise it to a point where you can de facto eliminate the entire city from residency eligibility. But what we're looking for is to tighten that or increase the buffer between potential residences and places where children congregate, parks, schools. uh, children congregate, parks, schools, uh, so on and so forth, uh, we're looking to increase that buffer to 2,000 feet, uh, we also identified another, uh, difference between, um, our ordinance and what state law is, where state law identifies a child victim as under the age of 17, and our ordinance, uh, restricted, um, residences to, uh, offenders with victims with, who are under the age of 16, so we need to change that to 17 to incorporate all of the child victims. Uh, the third shortfall is with our parks and, uh, recreational facilities, um, we are currently unable to restrict the use of those facilities to register to sex offenders with child victims, which means that our recreation center and our parks cannot tell a, uh, an offender with a, a child victim that they're not allowed to come there, which means that we either have to watch them while they're there, or, um, you know, take a chance that we have a, uh, an attendee become a victim, so we're looking for those changes, uh, to come forward.
So, uh, thanks for the staff report, open this up for, uh, questions and comments, um, Councilmember Owens.
We can't, uh, we can't go to 2,500?
Uh, I think I'll let, uh, Mr. Coker elaborate on that.
No, that's, it's a very good question, and, uh, as you will see, some cities have and, and some haven't, uh, and that's, a lot of times, it's a byproduct of the circumstances specifically related to that city, and, and if you'll allow me, I'll just elaborate a little bit, um, as Assistant City Manager Frazier just indicated, you know, one of the things we can't do is just sort of do a blanket prohibition, uh, those, those types of cases, or excuse me, those types of ordinances have been, uh, challenged across the, the nation in many states, and they've been overturned, uh, usually the reason, uh, they're overturned are on different grounds, sometimes it may be, one of the more common reasons for overturning is, uh, equal protection clause under the 14th Amendment, somebody challenges on that basis, um, surprisingly, some people would think it's under Fair Housing Act, that they're entitled to fair housing, uh, but that's not the case, uh, these, uh, a sex offender is not a protected class, uh, and so as a result of that, they're not protected by the Fair Housing Act, um, uh, ex post facto is another reason somebody will, they've challenged, they've said, hey, uh, I've already been punished, and ex post facto law says you can't punish me again with a, for the, for something that I've already been punished for, and the courts have routinely sided with cities in those instances, uh, but what they have said is that when you try to do too broad of a regulation, it may not withstand judicial scrutiny, and the reason is that the, the US Supreme Court has come down and said, hey, if you're going to, i- if the law is to promote a legitimate state, or in this case governmental interest, it has to be narrowly tailored, and when we looked at this, we looked at, if we went to 2,500 foot buffer, you essentially are blocking out the entire city, it's, it's essentially taking, passing an ordinance that says you can't live in Pearland, and that would not be a narrow, narrowly tailored law, and as a result, uh, the 2,000 foot seemed to be more consistent, and one that we could withstand any judicial, uh, challenge.
Would this apply, uh, Darren, to, uh, I know our parks and stuff like that, but how about, uh, school sports activities, basketball, football, track, anything like that, are they able to participate or be in attendance for that?
Excuse me, uh, we couldn't incorporate that into this ordinance, what we did is we incorporated property that, park property that the city owns, and that we could actually have control over, uh, with respect to that.
Okay.
Um, but, right now, the, again, the, the primary, uh, purpose was to expand the, the buffer with respect to residency requirements.
Can this one go under the B and B stuff?
No, it doesn't, it does not apply to that.
Okay, that's it, that's all.
So, if the 2,500 would have, um, blocked off the city, the 2,000 basically blocks off most of the city, but not all of it, do we have areas that we've identified, uh, locations where they can live?
So, the ordinance and the procedure that, that, that we work under requires the sex offender to identify a property that's, that's eligible, we don't have to give them a list of addresses that say, here you go, you can live here, um, we, we basically restrict them based upon the residence that they propose.
I mean, I guess, from our perspective, though, do we have a, are we cognizant of where they are limited to?
Right, so, so currently, um, the sex offender registration is conducted by the executive assistant in the Criminal Investigations Division of the Police Department, um, they have a map that's provided by GIS, which, um, they check to determine whether or not an address falls within the, the buffer zone.
Okay, um, and this covers city-owned parks, what about HOA-owned parks?
It would not apply there, no.
So, Shadow Creek is pretty much open?
And, I mean, it, it, it is currently, yes.
So, the, uh, the other thing is, so the, the HOA parks, they have the ability to, to issue criminal trespass warnings and to call us when so, when somebody is in that park, and, and we can, um, we would actually arrest somebody for criminal trespass under Class B misdemeanor, this creates a Class C misdemeanor for enforcement in city parks.
But he could live, he or she could live across the street from an HOA park, and we have no capability of preventing that, correct? Because, and be, you know.
The residency requirement will still apply, they cannot live with it, they would not be able to live within 2,000 feet of a Shadow Creek Ranch Park.
So, they, so they, it does extend to the HOA-owned parks, not just the city parks, correct?
So, I, I, and I think the, the confusion, so the criminal trespass, uh, offense that we are creating here applies to city parks, the residency restriction require, uh, restricts them for, for the residency requirement to any place children congregate, which includes HOA parks, so long as they fit the definition of a park within the ordinance.
Okay, that, that was the clarification I needed, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it basically, surrounding playgrounds, schools, daycares, uh, arcade facilities, public-private youth centers, swimming pools, public or private, anywhere, you know, that, so they have to register, and they can't live within 2,000 feet of those types of things. Okay, Councilmember Little?
Will this, uh, law be applied retroactively, let's say somebody's at 1,500 feet right now, and they have a residence established, and this new law, law takes effect, are they gonna be in violation? Uh, so no, sir, only if they move, if they move and, and change residency, uh, will we, uh, but they do that quite often, and so, um, you know, as, as long as they've established residency, then we can't apply it retroactively. These all apply to residency, uh, do we have laws that prohibit them from just going and hanging out within a certain number of feet of, uh, let's say, a school playground or a park where children congregate?
Uh, and the answer to that is no, uh, the, the courts have come down and generally said, hey, having a residency requirement, uh, is something clearly, there's a legitimate state interest there, uh, but ironically, as far as, uh, movement within the city and, and going to these locations, uh, the state, or, most states have shied away from, uh, cocaine ordinances that prevent that, the free movement of individuals.
Where order might be able to prevent them from doing that, right, if they had the judge, uh, some terms of probation, something for that?
They could have some additional restrictions applied to their probation, and then, uh, the, where we felt like we had the latitude to do that would be with our own parks and facilities that we have own and have control of, and that was the, the limited approach we took here by adding that provision, uh, in this, and through this ordinance.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kamkar, I thought you, uh, raised your hand there for a second.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, there, uh, just to be clear here, um, is a public-private youth center, uh, library, does that constitute one of these items?
No, a, a library would not, uh, fit in based upon the definition, well, let me see, public-private youth center? I don't believe it would fit the definition under 481.134, no.
City, city attorney, could we make that motion to amend that, would that be viable?
Uh, no, that, that would not be viable, because there, we're only allowed to do it to the extent, uh, with the residency requirements that we're authorized to do so under 48.1, 481.134, of the Health and Safety Code.
Okay.
Councilmember?
Mayor Protim, sorry. Yes, uh, Mayor, uh, thank you, um, so, Assistant City Manager Frazier, this was actually brought forward one year and seven months ago, uh, the request was put in by myself and Councilmember Owens seconded, so I'm glad to see, uh, that it's finally arrived, almost two years later, so thank you for your due diligence in that, uh, question about the, uh, adding the public parks, does that include trails?
Uh, no, sir, I don't believe it does, Darren.
Yes, the, the actual language that we've added, uh, it says it's unlawful for any person to enter into a public park if the person is required by law to register, uh, on the sex offender, uh, database, and, see. Yes, I don't believe the trail system is gonna apply, I'll wait, wait a second, because I think we have a definition, the definition of public park means any land designated for public recreation that is owned, leased, or maintained by the city of Pearland, so yes, it would apply to the trail system.
Okay, I, I saw that was a very important distinction to be made, is that?
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember, any other questions, comments? Uh, on the trail system, does the trail system const, so if that constitutes a park, does that also, uh, 2,000 feet of buffer from the trail?
That's only gonna apply to the, um, criminal trespass provisions.
Okay, what about the residency?
The, it would not apply, no, they, they could still live within a thousand foot of the trail.
Two thousand, okay.
I'm sorry, 2,000, correct.
Okay, all right, any other comments or questions, seeing none, uh, Madam Secretary, call for that vote?
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt the first and only reading of ordinance number 1267 dash two.
All right, thank you, uh, moving on to item eight, Mayor Council issues for city council discussion, there were none, uh, with that, we will be moving into executive session, item nine, uh, in executive session, we will be, uh, taking up section 551.074 Personnel Matters, uh, regarding the city council ratification of city manager's appointment for the Director of Parks and Recreation, and section 551.074 Personnel Matters regarding establishing goals for the city manager, we do have new business to come out, uh, should we, uh, need that, so with that, at, what time is it, 8:12, uh, we'll move into executive session.
Uh, yes, and for Councilmember Kamkar, I'm going to open up the executive session meeting, a separate invite, and so if you will leave this meeting, and then as soon as I open that up, join that meeting, thank you.
Coming up on Texas Parks and Wildlife.
These old Spanish trails are the oldest routes of European travel in the entire country.
With this app, one button and that's it, you, everything is displayed, and it's a visual tool you can show them.
The bat flights are pretty spectacular, they are 500,000 bats here in the cave.
Texas Parks and Wildlife, a television series for all outdoors.
The Camino can definitely allow someone to travel back in time. The Borderlands, the Frontera, the frontier on the Rio Grande, there are these worlds, these places coming together, and that's what the Camino has always done. The cultural imprints that the Spanish left in the 1700s are still seen in many of these towns along the Camino. The Camino Real has always been about interaction between different cultures. We see that happening today, that trade and travel still takes place at these crossings. There are still connections there that have lasted for hundreds of years over time. This actually might be it, you can see the rapid right through here, I'm Steven Gonzalez, this could very well be part of the historic crossing, and I'm Executive Director of El Camino Real de los Tejas National Historic Trail Association. So, we're here at Los Corletos Ranch in South Texas, right on the banks of the Rio Grande, still a working ranch dating to the Spanish colonial period, and we're scouting around right now, trying to see if we can find swales, remnants of the road out here on the landscape, but it's so thick through here, it is hard to tell right now. El Camino Real de los Tejas is the old royal road that came up from Mexico City to establish Texas in Spanish colonial times, it's the road that led to the founding of Texas. There are many Caminos Realos that make up the Camino Real, in times past, these roads had different names because of the places that they were going to, the old San Antonio Road, the Nacogdoches Road, La Bahia Road, and the Laredo Road, every text and note that we can think of, all the way from Spaniards such as, uh, Alonso de Leon, to Davy Crockett, Jim Bowie, Sam Houston, they've all traveled along portions of the Camino Real at one time or another, and it's really elemental to the state's history, we think about things like the Battle of the Alamo and Goliad, and we forget that those troops were actually traveling along roadways, pathways, and that, those were largely the Camino Real and segments So, one of our goals is to make the public more aware of it. Essentially, Spain was establishing this new kingdom in what is now the USA, they saw the French as a threat. In 1714, the French established Fort St. John Baptiste in Natchitoches, Louisiana, that is the oldest settlement in Louisiana and the easternmost part of the Camino Real, that French settlement alarmed the Spanish, so the Spanish in turn established the first capital of Texas at Los Adais, in what is now Roble, Louisiana, no one could imagine that the first capital of Texas is in present-day Louisiana. It was essentially these two European powers standing off in what they considered to be the wilderness, but once that French threat subsided, there was no longer a need for those missions and presidios to be out there, and so those fortifications and settlements, they fell back and back and back. There is something about the South Texas landscape that I think more easily evokes the Camino and travel by Spaniards in times past. San Ignacio is a very unique community along the Camino Real, it's essentially an old Mexican village that was built in the mid 1830s, which is being, uh, preserved and, and taken care by people like the River Pierce Foundation and others there in the community, to help protect it for future generations to see and explore.
This is more like a Mexican village than anything, because of course it was, say, this the last of its kind in this country.
It's one of the best places anywhere along the trail to kind of get that vicarious experience of the Camino and, and what it may have been like in times past. Another great place to go and experience the Camino in South Texas is Goliad, there's no better place to go and see what a Spanish presidio would have looked like, so these presidios stretched all the way from the Gulf of Mexico to the Gulf of California, and Goliad was the easternmost presidio on the northern line of defense in New Spain. Goliad has two mission sites.
Mission Espirito Santo de Zuniga, uh, dating back to 1749, and we also have Mission Rosario on the other side of the river, beginning in 1754. Espirito Santo was active here all the way up until 1830, the majority of the restoration work took place in the 1930s. work took place in the 1930s, but when you walk inside the chapel, you're getting a really good idea of what it would have looked like during the 18th century.
The Karanka, well, they didn't get along with the ironamas that were already there. So they created another mission.
Mission Rosario is not restored. It's got the foundations and the remnants of the walls there. So it gives you an idea of the architecture before the restoration would have taken place. There's a new visitor center being constructed, and it'll highlight the trail and show how those missions are attached to it.
El Camino Real went directly through the town of Goliad. They would have needed to transport goods and people back and forth between places like San Antonio as far north as Nacogdoches.
When we think of things like Goliad or the missions in San Antonio, we forget that there was a road that connected those things. If you look at the layout of San Antonio, with the Camino connecting all the missions, you have the plaza at the core with the Spanish governor's palace, the seat of government there, and San Fernando Cathedral right there on the plaza. It really does have the layout. It does fit that formula that the Spanish prescribed way back when, and it's still there on the landscape today. 35 really became the superhighway that it is because of the travel along the Camino Real here in central Texas. Following the foot of the escarpment, they would have come to these beautiful springs. Unlike us flying down a modern highway, they were moving at a much slower pace. So they had parajes or campsites every basically 10 to 20 miles. The towns here in central Texas essentially pop up along the springs. There are many archives in the state that have great maps and other historical records related to the Camino Real, one of them being the General Land Office in Austin.
This is the 1833 map of Austin's colony.
That is impressive. They have great maps, property deeds, and other things that document the Camino, like boundaries of the old Stephen F. Austin Colony.
The old San Antonio Road is pretty much the northwestern boundary here. Yes, it almost looks like where it's crossing the Colorado would be...
We know where the trail went through many different kinds of evidence. The old San Antonio Road is clearly here along the top. So we look at old maps, this one right here. Yeah, that would indicate that it's somewhere up here in the Austin area, roughly around where McKinney Falls is nowadays. There's the historical record. So we look at the written record from the Spanish. It's hard to see what that is. From the French, from early Anglo settlers, that refers to the trail. Where we have our archaeological project going on is right in here. Another thing that we can do is discover the trail through archaeological efforts.
It's like peeling an onion, very slowly.
Currently, we're working on our Ranche Ria Grande archaeological project in Mylum County, near the community of Gauz.
These stones were purposely placed here. They follow a semicircular arc.
Working with private landowners who've actually been able to document numerous village sites.
There's another post.
As well as an unbelievable amount of Native American artifacts.
So this would be a defining wall of the structure.
So we know that in all probability, what we're dealing with is one of the circular style homes.
The Ranche Ria Grande was essentially a conglomeration of 22 Native American tribes.
Mission-style points were found up on this area. So right there, we know these domestic structures date to the Spanish colonial period.
The Spanish documented really early on. Some of the earliest maps do depict the Ranche Ria Grande and label it there in that general area of what is now Mylum County. It's more extensive. Back in here, all these petroglyphs within the rock. It's just a place like no other I've seen in Texas.
All these points here came off of this property here.
Landowners have their own collections, and we found things all the way from the point of contact to projectile points that are paleo-Indian in nature, over 10,000 years old. So it really is this place where there's this huge human history that has occurred over centuries. In East Texas, there are some great places that are publicly owned that you can see and experience the trail. One of the best is Mission Tejas State Park. It's still one of the rare places where you can go and hike along the actual Camino and walk in the footsteps of Spanish explorers and early American settlers from the late 1600s to the 1800s, as people were coming through either way along the trail. Mission Tejas State Park also contains a commemorative structure of the first mission in Texas, and that's Mission San Francisco de los Tejas, established in 1690 by the Spanish on their first expedition to East Texas. So it's a great place to see and experience the trail. Right next door to Mission Tejas State Park is Caddo Mounds State Historic Site. The Caddo people built mounds there at the site, ceremonial mounds.
This is the Caddo grass house. It was built last summer.
They have a new visitor center there, which does a great job of interpreting that early Native American history. Plus, it has a great remnant of the trail there as well in the form of a swale with some great signage. I think it gives you that impression of distance when you're standing there at the Caddo mound site.
The Natchez is only a mile and a half from where we're standing. Travelers coming west to east, they would want to try and cross the Natchez River at the end of the day, make it up to the plateau here, and then camp on high ground. El Camino Real was surely a Native American trail before it was a Spanish royal road. And the Caddo in this area are actually known to have taken, the Spanish guided them across these roads. So they were well-traveled. Some of these Caddo roads were actually deemed to be as good as the roads leading into Paris.
The word Tejas is a Caddoan Indian word. The Spanish took to mean as friends. So we wouldn't have the name Texas without that Caddoan Indian word, Tejas. Communities along the Camino are very proud of the trail and its history. Nacogdoches is one of the oldest communities in Texas. The first mission in Nacogdoches was established in 1716. You see on Main Street, it's called El Camino Real, just off the plaza. We are the first national historic trail organization to actually own a piece of a national historic trail, and that is the Lobanillo Swales.
We're here in Sabine County at the Lobanillo Swales. The East Texas term for that is wagon tracks. When it was wet, this would get boggy. So what they do, they just move over a few feet and start another one.
We've got the northern edge of the property up here, which is Highway 21, and then the red line indicates the loop trail. Right now, it's in a raw form. There's no development. There's all kinds of undergrowth.
Right there, right there.
We're working with the National Park Service, Sabine County, and others
Good morning, Stephen.
to make the Lobanillo Swales accessible to the public.
Welcome to Sabine County.
The county judge thinks it's one of their best tourist resources within the county.
Hey, this is a beautiful set of plans.
We work with all kinds of partners, because it does take a combined effort to help develop the trail.
Just can't wait to see it open, so.
All right, thank you, Judge.
Appreciate it.
In Sabine County, not far from our property. The Gaines Alafont House is on the banks of the Sabine River.
Gaines ended up here in 1812 here at the crossing. In 1815, he bought the ferry. He built this house down here. We can pretty well prove that it was built in 1818.
And is it true, is the oldest Anglo-American structure in Texas?
Log structure.
Log structure.
Yeah, log structure.
It's a place that is really deep in Texas history and which essentially every Texan coming from the east would have crossed through at one point or another back in the 1800s. So we've traveled from the Rio Grande, and now we're here on the Sabine River at the Texas-Louisiana border. Historically, the trail would have continued on to the first capital of Texas at Los Adais, which is present day Louisiana. But here we stand on Toledo Bend. This is the end of the road in modern day Texas before heading on to Nacogdoches, Louisiana, about 60 miles away. The Camino has always been a place that has bridged borders. It's brought together people, cultures, and places, and helped to create the state of Texas that we know today. And that's why it's worthy of its designation as a national historic trail.
As a game warden here in Texas, we're tasked with enforcing the OSHA laws, and that includes enforcing closed and open areas. And the important thing is knowing where you're at in relation to those lines. And that's where Paul came in.
My mission was to compile data and create an app that showed game wardens' location in reference to these different zones and reefs. I took the state health department data and created an app that could be used on mobile devices so that game wardens can see where they are in relation to these areas.
It's just a good reference tool, whether it's for information, or whether it's for enforcement actions, or whatever it may be.
All through his GIS skills, his attention to detail, his patience and perseverance, has really been able to help us move the needle in technology. Hey, what's up, guys? I don't get to go out in the field and actually see my work in action. So it'll be nice to see how it works.
Say if we pull up to a boat, and it's inside this closed area, and say we're in a closed area here, we can run up to that boat, and we can shoot a line on that app right straight to that line or straight to that pole, and then we get a fairly true footage of how far he is inside the closed area.
Yeah, so how did you guys used to verify this stuff before?
Everything was manual. I mean, you literally, we would, we would make the boat stop where it's at, either put a warden off on that boat so they wouldn't move. We'd run that line, literally pole to pole with our boats, like marking the line so you see how, you could literally see how far he was. And now with this app, it's, everything is there. It's one, one button, and that's it. Everything is displayed. And it's a visual tool you can show them. Not just me saying it, you can actually physically show him where he's at. Anytime we can find something that makes our job easier, I'm all for that. With this app, it's at your fingertips now.
There are few places left that have not been largely touched by our culture. But at Kickapoo Cavern State Park, nature is almost untouched, the way it used to be.
It's a great place to just get away from it all. You can unplug from all the distractions in the city. We've got approximately 6,400 acres and lots to do. We've got birding, hiking, mountain biking. It's just a great place to get away from it all and just get back in touch with nature.
See the scrub jays?
Much of the beauty of Texas is hidden. To see it, you have to work for it, sometimes catching only a fleeting glimpse. Over 230 species of birds have been seen in this park.
We get a lot of birders from all over the country. They've read about it. We've got a lot of diversity here, and they're here a lot of times to fill their life list, whether they're looking for the black-capped vireo or the golden-cheek warbler. We've got them both here, so it's a great place for birding.
Jessica Klassen is a graduate student at Texas A&amp;M University studying the endangered golden-cheek warbler.
All right, here is one of our golden-cheek warbler nests. They make their nests out of the strips of ash juniper bark. So the little clump up there of ash juniper that you see at the canopy of the tree is our golden-cheek warbler nest, and directly below it is, you'll see our camera that we're using to monitor the nest with. But we like to disturb them as little as possible, so we stay at the nest site for as short a period as possible.
By using an infrared camera and remote recording unit, Jessica is able to monitor the bird nest without disturbing it.
We've been seeing nestling-type behavior, so we've seen both males and females carrying food, which we can infer would be to hungry nestlings in the nest.
Enter the darkness of the subterranean wonder of Kickapoo Cavern and witness roughly four million years of nature's artistic handiwork.
If y'all see this formation, it's pretty cool.
This is what you call being deep in the heart of Texas.
You got twin columns. What column on your right is the largest column in the state of Texas? It's 80 feet high, which is a little over eight stories. You can see the different colored drapery off of it, all the jellyfish-looking stuff. I see Mother Nature at its best.
The intrigue of the park lies as much above the ground as below. Stuart Batcave teams with Mexican freetail bats.
The bat flights are pretty spectacular. They are 500,000 bats here at the cave. Takes approximately an hour and a half for all the bats to get out of the cave.
In our ever-expanding, fast-paced world, it's wonderful to know a place like Kickapoo Cavern State Park exists.
It's a really beautiful place, and we're trying to keep it that way. We're trying to keep it as natural as possible. It's a, it's a great place to just get away from it all and enjoy a part of Texas a lot of people have never seen.
Visiting Texas state parks just got easier. With our new online reservation features, you can choose a specific cabin, campsite, or shelter and reserve it for your next visit. The new reservation system makes it easier to plan group getaways. Save the day and don't get turned away with our optional day-use reservation.
Good morning.
And be sure to get in.
Thank you.
Plus, you can buy park passes and gift cards online. Texas State Parks, getting better for you. Hey folks, Craig LeBoutin here with the Houston Museum of Natural Science. Now, we are known for having a lot of old dead things here.
Now, we are known for having a lot of old dead things here, right?
Yeah.
But we actually have a lot of live animals. If you've ever been through death by natural causes, you've seen them. If you, of course, go to the Cockrell Butterfly Center, you see that we have tons of things that are living. But we also have a really great program with live animals that are available for outreach to go to schools and after-school events, things like that.
Church programs, adult programs. We pretty much go anywhere they want us to show up. We primarily do a lot of schools.
So this is Christine Batten, and she is the Live Animal Program Manager. That's a lot of words for a very fun job. She basically tends to all of the live animals that we have here that are available for outreach. And I hear one in a box below me.
Now, this is a male box turtle, and how can we tell? Do you know how we can tell?
Because he's staring me down.
Staring you down, he's taking you for a challenge.
Yeah, he is.
So you can tell by coloration. In our box turtles here in Texas, males can be more brightly colored than females in general. One of the things we've been told is that, you can look at the iris color. So if you have an orange-red iris, you have a male. If you have a yellow-green iris, you have female. Yeah, well, my female has yellow-orange irises, so there you go. Otherwise, how else do you know? Well, you could look at the length of the tail. There's other ways you can try to identify. You could also have a veterinarian or licensed professional probe. Yes, two fingers, very good.
See, I'm a good kid.
Good kid, paying attention, good job.
Oh, see, now he's enjoying it. Now, how important is it for a museum like us to have live animals like this to sort of do outreach for children?
Some of the animals that we bring out are Texas natives. These are animals that kids should see in their neighborhood parks, in their areas around them, and we want to kind of tell them, hey, these animals are cool, they're safe, they're not trying to hurt you. So we want to give them an opportunity to get close to something they might be really scared of. That's one of the best ways you can do this, is providing an opportunity for a kid to get, interact with an animal in a safe way. That can really change their perspective on how they view things.
And you can end up creating like a zoologist in the process.
Correct. I mean, that's kind of how I got started as a kid, as I got introduced to animals at a young age, and just kind of went crazy from there. So box turtles do like a really cool thing. You know why we call them box turtles, right? It's because they close up their shell. They have the ability to fold their plaster on that bottom part has a hinge, and he'll do it. I'm just going to do, hey, pay attention. Go on the shelf. Go, 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 go.
Oh, wow, that's like a...
Okay, now, wait for it, because he'll come right back out. Now, my female will not. She'll be like, uh-huh, and she will not come back out for a good 20 minutes, but he'll pop right back out. He's not shy. Uh-huh, here's your face. Here's your face, you're so pretty.
Show's over, come on.
We're going to move on to an animal that's going to require permits to keep. So this would be our American alligator.
Ooh, okay, I was excited about that.
This one, they're a little feisty, they've gotten a bit bigger. Make sure I open the right box.
It's an alligator.
It's an alligator. And when I pick him up, he's probably going to do basic things that alligators do, which is sort of thrash a lot.
Got it.
Mostly because he's not trained, he's not tamed in any way, which is good, because we want to return them back to the wild. This is our American alligator, and he is about two years old, and that means for us, he's getting large enough, we need to return him back to the wild. So we get our animals from Brazos Bend State Park in a trade cooperation with them.
Right next to the George Observatory?
That is correct.
Mm-hmm, plugged for the observatory.
A little shout-out for our friends there. And so we will return these alligators. So it's really important we don't teach them any bad behaviors such as humans mean food. And I love the coloration difference, and I mean, he clearly won't have these gold-yellow stripes as an adult. This is coloration for blending on the edge of a waterway where grasses stick up out of our water novalus.
I always hear a lot of kids, when I walk around the museum on my normal days, I always hear kids go, you know, that's a crocodile, no, that's an alligator, that's a crocodile, that's an alligator. What, is there a good, quick way we can tell people out there that can differentiate between the two?
One of the easiest ways to tell is to look at their face. Okay, so you're going to look at the shape of the snouts. I'm going to tip him down just a little bit so you can sort of see it there for camera. He's not going to like that. Hi, buddy, come here. There we go. So you can see he has the letter U from eyeball to eyeball around the nose. You can see it's shaped like the letter U.
Okay.
Okay? Alligator starts with an A, it's a vowel, it's shaped like a U, that's a vowel, so you're looking at an alligator. Crocodilians in general have elongated snouts, but a crocodile has a very long tapered snout. It's going to come to a fine point like the letter V. V is a consonant, crocodile's a consonant. There you go, you've got a crocodile. Actually, they have a whole outreach booking department. They book everybody here, so they can give you all the options. You want a dome program, you want bugs, you want science on stage to blow something up.
It's like a menu, you can be like, ah, I got a few reptiles.
Yeah, a little bit of this, a little bit of that. It's pretty good.
Okay.
So, you ready for another animal?
Yes, we are.
All right, all right.
Oh, that's a big snake. That's a big snake, folks. That is a big snake.
Hi, beautiful. Now, if you can get really good lighting on her, especially with natural lighting, she's called a rainbow boa. Now, these are native to Central and South America, and there's actually several different types. But she's a rainbow boa, and she has a beautiful iridescent shine to her, kind of like an oil slick on water. It's just radiant.
She is fashion-ready right now.
And she knows it.
Yeah.
She's like, bring it, I got this. And she's got these really beautiful eye spots on the side. That's actually to help her, where she's hiding in the leaf litter. If you saw two eyeballs that were this large peeking out through leaf litter, it makes you think, how big is the animal hiding in leaf litter? So they're going to walk away from her, and that's her primary defense. That's how she's going to protect herself, is to mostly hide. She's going to come around me and give me little snake hugs today.
I was going to say, you have a belt on now.
I do, right? She's going to keep going, because that's how she's most comfortable. Plus, I'm warm, and she's a tropical animal. She really prefers higher temperatures, so I'm nice and toasty. I'm her favorite warm treat.
And we're in the Cabinet of Curiosities, if you haven't noticed. And it's kind of chilly up here, so...
Yeah. I don't know if you can see, she's got, as she grows, she gets these little circles on the top, but she also has new patterns. So right now, she's got a little heart she's working on. She had Mickey Mouse ears for a while there, it was pretty cute. Can you see that?
She sort of has tattoos in a way.
She does. Yeah, you can two-finger-tetch her, and she feels really smooth.
Smooth and a little bit chilly.
Yep, a little cold.
Yeah.
Little cold up here. I'm going to put her head up here, and you can snake slide from all the way down. Yep. And so that gives you a really good sense on how she feels, and you can feel she's very muscular for, she's a big girl. You can also touch her belly scale, she tends to be ticklish.
Is she going to be okay with that?
Yeah, she's been doing this for years. And you'll tell, she'll kind of like suck it in, go, I think she's a little ticklish. I think all of my snakes are. So she does have heat-sensing pits on her face, okay? And she's going to use that tongue, that's her best way of telling what's going on around her. She has fairly good eyesight, but she really uses her sense of smell. And I think if you could actually train a snake to track a human, they'd be really good at it, they just get bored real fast. They just don't care.
That'd be terrifying for people.
Well, if we were going to go and look for one, you know.
Have a tracking snake after you. All right, what else do we have?
All right, we're going to get one more animal out. Let me take off my hula hoop here.
Okay, there we go.
This is actually a newbie. He's, we're training him the process to add him to our outreach programming. So he's a young...
He's a trainee.
He's a trainee. And this is actually his first view in front of public, and heaven's on camera.
Oh, my.
So we're going to see how he does. This is a savanna monitor. Monitors and tegus are both highly intelligent lizards. They're, they get bored, and when, just like anybody gets bored, they get a little destructive. So, and he's a little on the darker side, and we have another savanna who's at retirement age, he's getting up there, and he's a little bit paler than this guy here.
What do the claws feel like?
Shark claws?
Just sharp, like, is it kind of...
Really sharp.
Okay, like a cat?
Oh, yeah, cats are good analogy, yeah.
All right.
I would say more like a ferret, because cats, you can't really hold like this.
Very rough. Now, monitors, where would you find a monitor at?
Oh, you could, the zoo. We don't have monitors native to the United States, so these are going to be found. Africa's a great place to look for monitors. So if you're in South America, you're looking for tegus, they look very similar, but they're distantly related.
Got it.
And our tegus will also eat fruit, when monitors like this are just going to be carnivores. Now, you can find monitor-type animals in Australia as well. So at this age, they're going to eat pretty much anything they think they can catch. So we offer him a lot of crickets, we give him lots of grasshoppers. We're also going to offer him earthworms, but he does get a weekly mouse rotation. Okay, and he gets much, much bigger. This is just a little one. Okay? So a full-grown is going to be probably about the length of my forearm to the end of my fingers, and then the tail would hang off after that. So we're just talking body length, snaps event. Now, these guys can be found on the ground. Aguantes you can find climbing up into trees, and they're going to be a little bit more aquatic. This one is definitely going to be found terrestrial. They'll go down into burrows, they do like to tunnel a little bit. It's got shark claws, we're digging through all that dirt.
All right, Christine, thank you for giving us a little tour of some of the outreach animals that we have here, the reptiles especially.
Yeah.
These guys are just amazing. It's really great that we have this program here, folks. If you have an after-school program, or school, or a church group, or anything that you would like to have one of these guys make an appearance at, you can do that. Contact our outreach program, and maybe Christine will show up with some of her friends. So there we go.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
For Texas-sized shaved ice, a stop at Texas Snow Fruit in Alvin, Texas is a must. Come on in, let's take a look.
When you're traveling through Texas, you're bound to get hungry. Join Joe as he eats his way through the Lone Star State. This is Texas Chronicles Pit Stop with Joe Perez.
My friend told me about a food truck in Alvin that was serving up some delicious and creative treats, so I had to try them out.
We're here at Texas Snow Fruit today, and we sell specialty snow cones. They're all-natural, they don't have any food dyes, and they're made with all-natural flavorings. Our number one has been the Orange Dreamstickle. The Orange Dreamstickle is our orange-flavored shaved ice, which is topped with vanilla cream, and our vanilla cream is just super yummy. And then it's topped with a Orange Dreamstickle, those Orange Dreamstickles that you remember from fourth grade field day. We do other things with fresh fruit, like our strawberry cheesecake, which has strawberries, fresh strawberries in it. Our Mango Nada, which is mango shaved ice with chamoy and tahin. But all of our shaved ice is all-natural and super yummy.
Oh, man. That's good. Oh, yeah, that's really good.
One of the things that we try to do is we try to have things that don't have unnatural food dyes in them. We try to find some things that are a little bit healthier. And so our daughter has a food dye allergy, and so that's how we came upon these snow cones. We really try to search. Now, some of the things we have do have non-natural food dyes in them, we have them by request, so if you have an allergy, you can let us know. But we have things like gummies, and specialty sprinkles, and whipped cream, and all kinds of fun toppings. We can, we can make it pretty, pretty special.
The treat that blew me away had snickerdoodle-flavored ice, cinnamon sugar, vanilla ice cream, vanilla cream drizzle, whipped cream, and a snickerdoodle cookie on top. Wow. The smell was intoxicating.
So we're in Alvin, we are in Schofeld Square, which is just a little food truck park that's across from the Stanton's Grocery Store. And it's, it's just a little food truck park here, kind of in the downtown part of Alvin, where you can hang out and have a snow cone. You can find us on our website at TexasSnowFruit.com, and you can follow us on social media. We're on Instagram, we're on Pinterest, and we're on Facebook at Texas Snow Fruit. And we'll post our weekly special, so every week on Tuesday, we'll post what our special is for the week, and we'll have it till we run out. If you follow us there, you'll be able to see what our special, specialty will be for the week.
For a sweet treat to beat the Texas heat, a stop into Texas Snow Fruit is a must.
We get this question a lot of, how did we come up with the name Queen Bling? And I wish my mom could have been here today, but she would definitely be the queen part of it, and I would probably be more the bling part of it. I've always had a fascination with jewelry and accessories and clothing, and so it just kind of came together, and I wanted something that was catchy. So when people drove by, they were like, Queen Bling, what's that? I opened Queen Bling in 2010. I was a former high school teacher here in Pearland. There was a need that we felt for a small boutique. My mom and I decided to give it a go, and I quit teaching. So we've been here 10 years, and we just celebrated in May our 10-year anniversary. We sell a variety of things, from ladies' clothing and accessories, jewelry, shoes, purses, your typical boutique items. And one of the specialty areas that we have is our man cave. We had a request from my father and from my customers to have some man items. That is a surprising thing, I think, for a lot of ladies when they come in. Something else is, we are considered a boutique, but we are large. So when people walk in the door, they're like, wow, this is big. This is bigger than I thought it would be. We have a huge experience with visitors coming in. It's a lot of fun to meet people from not this area, and they're like, this is such a cool little area that you can travel, eat, there's some amazing restaurants here. For us, that's so important, to be able to recommend them too while they're shopping, like, they're like, where can I go eat? So we can give them some local restaurants here that they might not find in their hometown. What's changed for us? We have our social distancing markers at the checkout, and we are very blessed that our store is so big that you can social distance in here very easily. We do offer now hand sanitizer. Right when you walk in, we have a little machine there, and then we sanitize our store more than ever before. Why is Pearland a great place to come eat or shop? Number one, it's my hometown, it's been my hometown my entire life. There is a lot of Pearland pride. This little area is pretty happening with lots of variety of things that you can take care of while you're visiting or just living here. Definitely shop local and check out all the amazing things that this town has to offer. You can find some amazing places to shop and eat, and amazing people.
If you love them enough to crawl into a plate place to get them to come down, then surely you'll check nhtsa.gov/the-right-seat to make sure they're in the right car seat.
Just like the rest of the world, this has been a tough few months for Pearland, a time marked by uncharted territory that forced quick adaptation, new experiences, changing circumstances, and new struggles. The response to COVID-19 has brought out the best in our community and our wonderful public servants across the board. We look to those that shape and protect Pearland for inspiration. We admire their courage, their work, and their innovative spirit. But you, our Pearland community members, are role models too, the ones who stay prepared, informed, check on neighbors, and remain steadfast as these times change and come together to protect your community. So stay safe, stay strong, and keep going. We can do this together. We know these times have been challenging for many of us. Between caring for family and friends, and adjusting to a new home and work lifestyle, waiting in lines, and pushing our internet connections, we know that this has not been easy.
We recognize the strength and resiliency of our community, and we want to thank you, our residents and businesses, for your continued support through these times. But we're not done yet.
As we slowly begin to reintegrate into what we consider our new normal life, like returning to our usual workspaces and restarting our social lives, we still want to maintain some of these practices.
It's imperative to continue following recommendations of our health officials, such as hand washing, social distancing, and covering your clothes and sneezes to help curb and prevent COVID-19 spread in our community, even as case counts drop and recoveries climb. Stay informed and stay smart.
So please, continue to do your part, and once again, Pearland, thank you.
Hello, we're the Pearland Fire Department. As we get closer to summer, we want to share with you some important information about water safety.
Every year, first responders across the world respond to increasing calls for service related to water emergencies. Drowning is the third-leading cause of death among children.
Despite what you see on TV, drowning is quick and silent. You might have less than a minute to react and recognize what's happening. It can also happen in less than an inch of water.
Remember to always watch your child while in and around water without distractions. Children should be taught to swim at an early age. Professional swim lessons can be easily found in your area.
There are five survival skills your child should master.
There are five survival skills your child should master along with learning how to swim. Your child should be able to step or jump in water over his head and resurface on his own. Your child should be able to float or tread water for one minute without any assistance. They should be able to turn around in a full circle and find an exit from the water. Swim 25 yards to the exit. They must be able to exit the water without using any ladder or stairs.
Here are a few tips that can help you with water safety.
Drain all water from bathtubs after bath time. Remove water from buckets and wading pools when you're done using them and store them upside down.
Keep doors to bathrooms and laundry rooms closed. Keep toilet lids closed and use toilet seat locks to prevent drowning.
Please, never leave kids unattended near water and find out about how you can become an all-star in your community by learning CPR. For more information, please go to pearlandtx.gov/fire.
Hi, Pearland. My name is Mary Kate Ward. I'm the Youth Development Coordinator for the City of Pearland, and I am here to teach you how to make a wonderful face mask like I have on right now. First thing you need to know is that you don't need to be an expert. Even though I have a sewing machine at home, doesn't mean I'm amazing at sewing. So, I'm going to give you the basics. First thing you need to start out with is your fabric. If you are not a regular visitor to the fabric store, don't worry. You can use just a regular handkerchief like I have here. Again, I know this is a very muted tone, but we're going to use it anyway. Second thing is, I'm going to teach you how to use the template that'll give you this style of a face mask. I like this face mask because when I put on my glasses, it doesn't fog it up. So, good. Other than the fabric, what you'll need is elastic, or you can use strips of fabric, but you need to cut it to the exact dimensions to fit over your ear to make it secure on your face. You'll also need a very nice, heavy-duty pair of scissors, or for me, I use a rotary cutter. But again, I sew on a regular basis, so that's why I have my good stuff. This is the template we are using. The template will also be connected in a link down below, and we have it in small, medium, and large. So what I have on right now is the medium style. Let's get cutting. All right, so I'm just going to outline the template onto the fabric that I'm using. I am going to use all four of the cuts are going to be the same fabric. And it doesn't need to be perfect, you just need that kind of guide and outline. So now that I got my guide, or my template is marked out, I'm going to use a straight edge to help me guide with a rotary cutter. You can use a ruler or whatever you have on hand that will keep it that straight edge. So for the next part, I'm just going to use my scissors to cut around. You don't need to be precise and exact, but if you keep all four of the templates together, that'll make it easier when you're starting to sew. All right, so we have our templates ready to go. If you can see, we have four of the templates that we will sew together. Ready? All right, we will start with the curved part of the fabric. I will point out, I use these kinds of clips. With these clips, it just keeps it together because depending on the fabric, when you start to sew, it could cinch in and that could throw you off. You don't have to, again, go to a crafting store just to get the clips. You can use paper clips, you can use pens, whatever will keep it in place, and it will not interfere with the actual line of the sew. So I want to cut it to where it is a little bit of the fabric showing. So it's about 3/8ths of the way in, and we'll start our sew. Okay, so once you've got your two sewn together, then what you're going to do is you're going to put them together. And, again, we are going to sew it to where we have the seam on the heart facing us, because once we get done sewing, then we're going to flip it inside out, and it'll give that nice seam where you won't see all the stitches. Okay, so we've got everything sewn in, so we're going to flip it inside out and see how good this looks. Nice and easy. So this is our good beginning. Now we're going to secure the elastic. I do about 6 and 1/2 inches whenever I'm doing it, because I need a good amount hidden under so I can clip it. And when I clip it and then sew the seam, this clip will not get in the way of the actual seam. All right, and again, the first couple of face masks that you'll do, it's a learning curve. So you'll learn what length you'll need. I could give you dimensions, but your face is different than my face? All right, so we have our face mask. I do want to point out, if you are using the iron and seam, the no-sew, when it gets down to the actual getting that elastic on, it may not be successful, because anytime you pull on it, that's going to put some stress on that no-sew. So you might just want to get out your needle and thread and do it by hand, just making sure that it is securely in there. So with that, you now have everything you need to make a face mask. So stay safe, Pearland, and look good while you're doing it.
Pearland is in the business of being pro-business. From retail to research, medical to manufacturing, corporate to central hubs, we are one of the fastest-growing areas in the nation, and that gives businesses a significant boost. Our diverse workforce is educated and motivated, and, well, happy. The people of Pearland love the close-knit feel of a sophisticated and right-sized community only minutes from Houston. And many reverse commute to Pearland from surrounding areas to work for businesses here. One shining star is the 1,200-acre Lower Kirby District. As the southern anchor of Houston's famous Kirby Drive, this expansive development is perfectly placed for robust growth along the western border of Pearland, facing Beltway 8 and State Highway 288. Strategically situated, this versatile district is designed for urban residential, office, retail, technology research campus, and light manufacturing business. Existing developments within Lower Kirby already include a 150,000-square-foot Bass Pro Shop, Mitsubishi, and Dover 150,000-square-foot Manufacturing and Operations Center. In medical and research, Lonza's 300,000-square-foot Viral and Immunotherapy Development and Manufacturing Facility, the largest dedicated cell and gene therapy manufacturing facility in the world, is found in the Lower Kirby District. Plus, you'll find Merit Medical, a 93,000-square-foot R&amp;D Medical Device Manufacturing Facility, Cardiovascular Systems Inc.'s 46,000-square-foot Medical Device Manufacturing Facility, and the modern Kelsey Seabolt Headquarters, among many other names you'll recognize. Lower Kirby District is designed to maximize your ROI and grow your business. Coupled with our competitive incentives, affordable land ready for development, and in-place infrastructure, you'll find Pearland is definitely pro-business, pro-community, and pro-happiness. Pearland: Prepare to Love It.
Hello, I'm Pearland Police Chief Johnny Spires. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy declared May 15 Peace Officer Memorial Day and the Week of May 15 National Police Week. It's time we take to reflect and remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Unfortunately, in 2019, the United States lost 146 officers in the line of duty. Here in Pearland since 1960, we have lost three officers in the line of duty. On October 6, 1967, Officer Henry Wendell Jr. was struck and killed by an intoxicated driver while directing traffic at Main Street and Plum Street following a high school football game. On May 16, 1973, Police Officer James Cassidy Jr. was struck and killed by a commercial truck while provided an escort. On June 12, 2016, Police Officer India Panya was killed when his patrol car was struck head-on by a drunk driver at the intersection of Beast Broadway and Country Club while he was responding to a non-emergency call. I would like to thank the citizens of Pearland for your continued support. We have built a great partnership here in our community, and I'd like to invite you to our memorial located right here at our police station.
Hey, guys! Mary Kate here with our Camp at Home series. This week's theme is Olympics at Home. If you can see behind me, we have the Olympic rings, which are normally connected, but they are practicing some social distancing, which is the smart plan. This week, we have some fun, interactive, competitive games that you can do at home. We have about five games that we're going to show you. And when I say "we," I have two of my best teammates that are going to help me along. In these activities, all you will need is a positive spirit. We will be using some camp equipment to end with these games, but we're going to show you some alternatives if you don't have all the equipment that we have. You're ready? Let's get going. Our first teammate is the Pearland Parks and Recreation Athletic Specialist, Miss Miranda.
Hey, guys, let's get competitive.
Our second teammate is the Pearland Parks and Recreation Adaptive Recreation Specialist, Miss Adisalee.
Hey, there, let's get inclusive.
Let the games begin! The first game we're going to show you is called the Bubble Race. What you will need for this activity is some bubbles and something to use for the ring. We are using a hula hoop. If you don't have a hula hoop, what you could do is use anything you want to make a ring, as long as the bubbles can travel through it. Let's go over the rules. This is a timed race, and time starts as soon as you step over the line. If you step over the line and your bubble pops, you can go back over the line and start again. And the time will stop as soon as the first bubble goes through the ring.
Hey, guys, welcome to our next game, Air Pond. All you need is your imagination, some balloons, and a way to mark off your play area, keeping six feet in between the two areas. We are using these fancy schmancy mats today, but you can use anything from pillows, pillowcases, to sheets to mark off your areas. The object of the game is to get the balloon to land in your opponent's designated play area. That will give you a point. If the balloon lands outside of the opponent's designated play area, your opponent gets the point, and the person who receives the point is the next one to start with the balloon. So one way to adopt this game is by introducing pool noodles. If you have two siblings, one who is older and maybe one who is younger, you can give the younger one a pool noodle so that they can have that extra reach. You can also use this for children who may not have that reach capacity, maybe they can't raise their arms as high. You can give them the pool noodle, and it'll help them participate in the game, and so everyone can play together. For our next activity, we will be doing soft slide. For this, you will need a measuring tape and something to create your starting line. The object of the game is to slide as far as possible, and whoever has the longest slide wins the game. So what you will do first is you will get a running head start and slide as far as you can pass the line. If you do happen to run past the line, you will be disqualified. 1-on-1! 1/38! I got it right! For our next activity, we will be doing a paper airplane contest. The object of this game is to see who can launch the airplane the furthest. For this, you will need some paper, a starting line, and for your airplane, you can pick whatever design you like. This one is mine. So, let's get started.
The last game we have for you is called Secret Agent. It is a dodgeball-style game. The whole idea is that you are trying to keep your witness, which is a 2-liter bottle, up and alive the longest. I will be playing the Secret Agent, trying to protect the bottle in the middle. We have two attackers that are going to be on the outside, throwing beach balls at the witness, trying to knock it down. My job is to keep the bottle up as long as possible. You're ready? Let's get started. And time starts... Nope! I knocked it over! So, time would stop, and it doesn't matter if I knock it over or if one of the beach balls knocks it over. Time stops, and the one that keeps their witness alive the longest wins. All right, guys, so those are the games that we have for you at our Olympics at Home. Whenever you're doing these games, remember to...
Have fun!
Stay safe!
And stay active!
Bye!
It's a bird! No, it's a plane! No, it's a lot of birds! It's migration season! So, when it's time for birds to migrate, the weather is usually changing. So when they first feel that cold chill in the air, the chemical in their body gets set off, and they go with urgency to know that it's time to migrate. So it's the same chemical signals that are in their need to try to find food or to try to find a mate. It's like a light bulb goes off, and they're ready to fly. So behind me, there is a map of the United States, and all those little lines on it represent flyways. What's a flyway? A flyway is an area of air that a bird uses as it migrates. So way out in the east, we have the Atlantic Flyway.
So way out in the east, we have the Atlantic Flyway. Just over my shoulder, on the west coast, we have the Pacific Flyway. And right here in the very center, we have the Central Flyway. And this happens to be where Texas's flyway is. All the birds that come through Texas love it. And why? Because Texas is migrate. Come on down, birds. Get it? So when birds are migrating, they do fly for very long periods of time, but they do stop in several places to rest. But those places to rest are shrinking. That's one of the main reasons that so many migratory birds are now threatened, because there's a loss of land, loss of food, and there's more obstacles in their way as they are migrating. There are tons of things you can do to help migratory birds. One of the things you can do is by putting out food for them. And making sure you have fresh bird seed or even like hummingbird nectar. But you want to make sure that it's fresh. We don't want to try to give animals food that might be rotten or moldy. So if it's recently rained, you probably need to change all that food in your feeder so that way it's healthy and safe for those birds that are migrating. So with all the birds that we have on the planet, it might be kind of hard to relate bird versus person-bird.
Session at 9:21. We are into new business continued. Item number eight, Councilmember Carbone, would you put that on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action regarding the City Council ratification of City Manager's appointment of Kerry Capers as the Director of Parks and Rec. So moved.
Tag it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kamkar. Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
All right, there is no action to be taken on item number nine. But I will say this, we, the City Council has discussed not just goals for our city manager, but also goals for ourselves. And so we'll be looking to have a goal-setting retreat of the City Council here in the next couple of months. More to come on that as we get an exact date and time in order to facilitate that. So with that, I'm calling this meeting adjourned at 9:23.
Coming up on Texas Parks and Wildlife.
They are so mysterious. People don't see them.
Pearland, Texas, is a city looking to the future. And the future begins with wellness.